To call the meeting to order, would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the Board of Aldermen meeting for Monday, April 21st, 2025. Before we get into the agenda, I have had a request from one of the members of the Board of Aldermen, Alderman Clifford. If he could say if, he wishes to say a few words about two of our recently passed city employees. So, Alderman Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize two former city employees that have passed away in the last month, James Moose Lawrence and Jay Big Cat Soliski. Moose had a three, a 31-year career with the city. He started as a custodian at the wastewater plant and then went to the street department as a cement finisher and a truck driver, and finally as an equipment operator with the water department. He retired on October 1st, 2017. Jay Soliski worked for the Recreation Department as a foreman for 11 years from 2004 to 2015. I knew both of these men personally, and I'm proud to call them my friends. Rest in peace, my friends, and I thank you both for your service to our community. And, Mr. President, I understand Tyler Dahlin has something he'd like to say regarding Jay.
That would be fine.
And I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, too, after, after.
Yep. Thank you. So, I'm Tyler Dahlin, the Director of the Recreation Maintenance Department. So, I worked with Jay for his entire tenure at the city. I actually started in 2003, and Jay started in 2000, the spring of 2004. He ended his service, as Mr. Clifford said, in 2015. Jay was our foreman for the, his entire duration that he worked for our department. Jay was a skilled and versatile tradesman. He brought a wide range of expertise to the Rutland Recreation Department. His capabilities spanned various areas, including concrete work, construction, electrical plumbing, equipment, and machine operation. Prior to Jay, a lot of those abilities were, we didn't really possess. So, Jay brought a large skill set to us. Jay was willing to teach anybody that was, that he felt was worth the effort. Jay was kind of an old-school guy that he, he felt if, if you put the effort in and, you know, you, he could see that drive in you, that he would put that, the time and the effort into teaching you. And Jay was a very good teacher, and Jay taught me a lot of the skills that I have to this day. He had a big impact on my life as an individual. Jay was old-school. If you weren't doing it, whatever it was right, in his eyes, he'd let you know, and he wouldn't let you know nicely. Jay was, Jay was an old, old-school gruff guy. He was a concrete guy. He didn't sugarcoat it, his words. He wanted to make sure the task was completed correct, and if it was the hard way, that was the way to do it. He didn't, he didn't cut corners. He didn't, he didn't want it done the easy way. Jay liked to smack-talk, break whatever you guys want to call it. He, he was, um... Jay was a great guy, and he, he, he was, he was a pleasure to work with. I just want to kind of give you guys a quick story about Jay. Jay is a big, gruff guy, was not actually supposed to be in the trades. He was actually, he went to school to be an accountant at his father's accounting firm here in Rutland. And Jay always told me the story of the moment that he knew that he was in that wrong, wrong spot. So, he was, he was actually sitting in his father's firm doing taxes, and he was looking out the window. He had his collar shirt on and his tie, and there was, I don't know if it was maybe DPW guys out there working in a hole fixing pipes or something and playing music and having a good time and cracking jokes, and, and he just stood up, he said, from his chair, and took his tie off and threw it in the garbage can, and he said, "Thanks, Pop, but I'm all set," and out he walked. So, that was Jay's defining moment, and I always remember that story, Jay. Jay helped really build and grow the Recreation Maintenance Department, the people that were in it, with what he gave to us with the knowledge and everything. He, he really did grow our department to where we are at today. Jay's contributions to the city between the beautification landscaping efforts, I think the biggest thing that Jay could be remembered for is George Eddie Arena and George Eddie Park. Without Jay's abilities and his knowledge in the trades and concrete work and the long hours that he dedicated to that facility, George Eddie Arena would not be what it is today. And now with, you know, the improvements that are coming up, the, the hard work that we put into it, you know, back in 2007, so many years ago, will, will live on. So, Jay's memory will live on through George Eddie Arena, and the community should be thankful for that because that is a, a great facility for us to have. So, like I said, I worked with Jay side by side for eight years of his 11 years with the city. He had a significant impact on me personally and professionally. You will always be remembered for his influence also on me and on the community. At times, Jay and I, man, we were butt heads because we were two strong-willed individuals, but in the end of it, we had a mutual respect for one another that we could work that out and move through it, and in the end, we were always joking and having a good time. So, I'll miss Jay. He was a great guy. I'll always remember him, and I just, you know, say thank you to Jay and rest in peace, my friend, because you will be missed, so.
Thank you.
And so, if we could have a moment of silence for our two departed brothers. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, so, let's get into the agenda. Additions, deletions, or other modifications to the agenda. So, I have a couple of quick ones that I would like to make if I could. I've had a brief chat with the mayor before the meeting, and we are attempting to get Alderman Wickham here, either physically or on that screen over there. And so, what I'd like to do is move the mayoral nominations to the end of the meeting, hearing no objections. And I also would like to move Alderman Talbot's resolution up to immediately following the mayor's communications. I know there's a lot of people here that are here for that, so instead of making you sit through the whole meeting, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to that as soon as we possibly can. So, hearing no objections from the board, that's exactly what we're going to do. Thank you very much. So, next up is amendment and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Some more.
Okay, so, there's a motion to approve the minutes. Is there any debate? Anybody make any changes? Seeing none, those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Motion passes. Okay, public comment. We have several folks who are listed here on my agenda. The first one is Brianna Franzone and Desna Jenkins, Rutland County Solid Waste District, talking about Green Up Day 2025. Welcome.
Hi, I'm here to talk about Green Up Day. So, you might see these posters around downtown for Green Up Day. The Rutland County Solid Waste District is your place to go for Green Up Day supplies, bags, gloves, anything like that. We have them at One Smith Road, which is near the, adjacent to the Costello's Materials Recovery Center, the recycling center. You can also get them downstairs in the clerk's office. She has a limited supply here. And so, we are in charge of cleaning up this area in Rutland City. We have maps, so if you want to join us right outside the city hall on Green Up Day, May 3rd. You can be a part of the Mighty Tidy Rutland Group that's cleaning up the downtown area. We have zones, and we'll have everything you need, including some snacks and water, for you to come and take part in that. I also have, you know, afterwards, if you want to talk to me about it, I have bags, posters, other stuff that goes along with Green Up Day. If you don't want to stop by our office or somewhere else, if you just want to go ahead and grab some right now, you can, well, after the meeting, right now. But anyways, so Brianna and I will be available to do this. She's out sick today, but yes, so Rutland County Solid Waste, we have all your needs here for Green Up Day, and I hope we have a wonderful day with great weather and great turnout. It's looking like it's going to be great.
Oh, that's terrific. Well, thank you. Is anyone have any questions for our guest? Green Up Day, the 3rd of...
May 3rd.
May, May 3rd. Oh, yes, Alderman Heck.
Is it still that the clerk's office holds green bags for people want to come pick those up to use this, as a designated drop-off as far as that goes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, that's terrific. All righty.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming in. Appreciate it. All righty, so, next up, we have Maggie O'Brien, Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Maggie, welcome. Now, we are having a committee report on the local hazard mitigation plan. If you'd like to save your comments for that part of the, of the, of the meeting, you certainly can. You don't have to repeat it here and then do it again.
Okay, yeah, that would be preferable.
That'd be okay?
Yeah.
All right, very good. All right, thank you. All righty, and next up, Peter Franzone. Thank you, thank you.
Greetings, Mayor Dungus, Board President Alair, the Honorable Members of the Board of Aldermen, and the citizens of Rutland. Thank you all again for allowing me this opportunity to address you once more. I return here on behalf of myself and the concerned people of the city of Rutland to hear your reply to the demands upon you, our elected officials, to cease and desist in activities that publicly challenge the integrity of constitutional law.
Could you get a little closer to the mic, please?
Not going to help. To cease and desist in the activities that publicly challenge the integrity of constitutional law, to individually and collectively go on public record to reaffirm your oath of office, furthermore, to officially declare that you will use any and every power granted to you by your offices, positions of title, and any powers afforded to you by the rule of law to ensure, indemnify, and protect the constitutional rights of the said people, most especially those rights of due process as guaranteed to us all by the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of the United States Constitution. Specifically to the elected officials in the board here, I want to be clear, this is not a witch hunt, and it never was. We should all be far more concerned about our actions going forward this, from this point, to do as much as we possibly can to protect and inform the people of the city of Rutland, rather than spend time on the damage that may have already been done, intentional or not. Furthermore, for the record, nothing I have spoken here at the rail or out in the public I have high confidence of I could ever be construed that I would ever advocate for violence. I never would advocate for violence, and I never have, and I would never tolerate anybody that's associated to me on this matter in doing so either. Anyone that knows me on that knows I'm rock solid on it. I don't even tolerate joking about it because it doesn't help any of us. I have been firm on that point with every single person I have spoken to, not since before I spoke to you last time, but since. Furthermore, I will also never and will not tolerate anyone associated to these matters ever speaking on the behalf of or in the name of the identities, beliefs, or especially the individual struggles of those persons in the vulnerable communities among us. That is not our place. The only things that I and any of the people I may be here representing, that we are allowed to speak up for are our shared constitutional rights, our shared constitutional rights. We make no other representations whatsoever. Since I had last spoken to you, I had the very good fortune of meeting with a local law enforcement officer known well to this community, who not only provided me with most of the information that we were asking for, but further, he went to confirm to me with utter certainty and complete faith of the total devotion of every officer in his department to upholding their oaths and also to their upholding the due process of law. We thank him very, very much, and we commend him. Furthermore, we've all noticed the recent concerted efforts of the good Chief Phil Cullen to disseminate even more of that information to the public. It has been such a huge gesture of good faith. It's done more than I can express for more people than I could tell you, to make them a little bit less afraid, to keep them informed. It did a whole lot to reduce a lot of panic out there. Probably the most important thing is it generated an immense amount of public trust for our local law enforcement officials. So, I'm going to say it twice, similar to like I did last time, because I want to make sure you heard me, chief, because we are all real scared, and you and your department stuck your neck out for us. You heard me when I said it, and you took a big risk, not just for all of the more risks you already deal with with the public, but you're exposing yourself more to public scrutiny and to risks that are probably beyond most of our comprehension by exposing yourself to the federal authorities. And the public would do well to note that if we're going to be asking our elected officials to make this stand for us, and most importantly, our law enforcement officials, you, the public, need to double down on our efforts and more in a good faith and show of support of them and that we will stand by them. I'm sorry I went off script here, and I'm going to be quick, but on a personal note, again, chief, I'm indebted to you, and I'm a nobody, but if I ever can be of service, all you have to do is but ask. Thank you. Because of their efforts, it had been our original intent this time to rescind the demand upon our mayor and the board to engage with our good chief and our local law enforcement department anymore on these matters in the hopes that they wouldn't have to give over any more of their already limited time to these matters than are absolutely necessary. However, in light of recent news that there may already be a resolution prepared by this board, we would leave that decision to those of you here hopefully better suited to it. Upon the rest of the demands aforementioned, we, the concerned people of the city of Rutland, most anxiously and respectfully await your reply. We further wish to express our deepest gratitude and our most sincere thanks to those of you that have given serious consideration to the severity of facts at hand, the safety and concerns of everyone involved, and most importantly, your serious consideration to what your actions here now may mean for the future of the people of Rutland City, and we most kindly and thank you all once again. I'm simply going to ask now the board president and any of the aldermen to please inform me if I'm supposed to stand up here for comments, if I may, please go back to my seat. And I thank you all again kindly.
I'll try to politely say something along those lines. No, if, if anyone has anything, any questions or any comments they'd like to make while Mr. Franzone is up at the mic, they certainly can. If not, we do have that resolution coming, so stay tuned.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, maybe the mayor would wait until the resolution is, is circulated. It just seems appropriate that we move it up to this point now.
You ready to do it now? Yeah, okay, if that's all right with you. Okay, yeah, why don't we go ahead and do that, then?
Can I have three public comments first?
David?
Yeah.
Yes.
We haven't closed the public comment yet. If there's other members of the public that want to speak first, we should do that before we introduce the resolution.
Okay, so, let's get on with the public comment, and then we'll, we'll try to get into it here in, in order. Thank you very much. Anyone else that, from the public who would like to speak on an issue not on the agenda? So, not on the agenda, sir?
Resort is on me.
Okay, so, we'll wait until it comes up. Thank you very much. Yep, and I will certainly get over to you. I have somebody with their hand up over here. So, if I could politely ask you to just go up to the mic so they can catch you on Peg TV. You'd be a star like the rest of us. And if I could just, once again politely, just ask for your name and address for the record.
My name's Stephen Box. I live at 48 Kendall.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Box. You've gotten the haircut and the, you look very, very handsome tonight.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name's Stephen Box, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Partners in Housing. Partners in Housing is a community-based housing group, housing committee, and we're committed to bringing together the folks that have a piece of the housing puzzle. So, obviously, there's housers at the meetings. There are also the folks that represent people that need housing, so the social services agencies that provide the wraparound services, we call them the wrappers. So, we've got housers and wrappers, and we've got the supporters, lawyers and bankers and real estate agents and property managers and the trades, and we call them the supporters. And the fourth leg, I guess, of the table is the government, and so, we were honored at our first meeting of the year to have the mayor and the city assessor and the city treasurer and city planning director join us as we kicked off 2025. The three things that we're attempting to do is to identify the empty units that can get back on the market quickly, to look for ways to break down the silos. I personally deal with 22 agencies and authorities with regards to housing in just the city of Rutland alone. And the third thing is to identify the funds so that we can do what we can to speed things up for the folks that are renovating, building, investing, so that we can get more housing online as, as fast as possible. The reason I'm here tonight is to invite you all to our monthly meeting, which is this Friday, the fourth Friday of every month is our, is our meeting, and it'll be at 1:30 in the afternoon. It'll be at the Hub in the sidewalk conference room. And this particular meeting will focus on short-term rentals. And so, our featured speaker is Julie Marks, who is the founder and director of the Vermont Short Term Rental Alliance, and she'll be speaking, and we'll have the opportunity to discuss short-term rentals and their impact on the community. This is especially relevant here in Rutland because for some time now, we have been having discussion with regards to an ordinance or different versions of an ordinance, and so, this is an opportunity for us to all get in the room. I think it's the biggest room they have, and it could even spill into the sidewalk from what I understand. How exciting would that be? So that we can talk about short-term rentals here specifically in Rutland. There are 200 and, I don't know, 50 cities and towns in the state of Vermont, and they're all different, and so for us to pretend that we're Stowe or Killington or Dover is redunculous. You know, it's Rutland, and we should do something very specific for Rutland that's good for Rutland residents, Rutland investors, Rutland hosts, and most importantly, Rutland's guests. And so, it's on that note that I'd like to invite you all to come and join us in that conversation and contribute from your perspectives to the short-term rental conversation. So, thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and I hope to see you Friday at 1:30 at the Hub. The website is partnersinhousingvt.com, and you can email us at partnersinhousingvt@gmail.com. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Box. Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else outside the rail on an issue not on the agenda? And if I could politely ask if we could have your name and address for the record, and the floor will be yours.
My name is Cindy Laskovich, and I reside at 22 Engram Ave in Rutland City.
Thank you, Cindy.
I'm here today as one person on the team of volunteers who are supporting Kim Peters with a petition that is in multiple retailers around the city and most recently online at change.org. Today, I have some partial totals in that the signature collection is ongoing and not all petition forms have been collected and counted. The online version of the petition that people are signing raises follows. We, the undersigned residents of Rutland City and surrounding communities, urge Mayor Michael Dungus and the Rutland City Board of Aldermen to reconsider the decision to remove Kim Peters as recreation superintendent. Kim has been an exceptional leader, expanding programs, integrating the former College of St. Joseph Gymnasium, and fostering a strong, dedicated team. Her hard work and vision have enriched our community, providing valuable recreation opportunities for residents of all ages. The petition continues. The mayor himself has publicly acknowledged and praised Kim's contributions, yet no clear reasons have been given for her removal. We believe major leadership changes should involve transparency and public input. We call on city officials to listen to the overwhelming community support for Kim and retain her in this role. And it finishes up saying, "Please sign this petition to support keeping an outstanding public servant at the head of our city's recreation department." And that's the end of the petition language. Based on the physical pages that volunteers have provided to the community and collected, the partial total in that some pages have not been retrieved and signature collections are ongoing is 421. The online total at change.org sits at 223 as of earlier today. The accumulated, but still incomplete, total is 644, achieved in just a few weeks, mostly driven by awareness through social media. There are certainly more avenues to grow the participation in this petition as needed. To the board, we ask, who can doubt the recreation department under Kim's leadership is thriving? Who can't see she lifts up Rutland City with the well-managed and, and growing list of offerings to both residents and non-residents? She's not only growing revenue for the city, she's helping to build a positive image of Rutland City that draws residents and visitors alike. These are only some of the reasons the community supports her. Even as other city issues jump into the headlines, the public's interest in keeping Kim Peters at the head of the recreation department has not wavered. The community members who have volunteered intend to continue to support Kim and grow this effort, this effort to demonstrate the community's support for her until the goal, her renomination and confirmation as the head of the recreation department, is realized. So, I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else outside the rail from the public who would like to speak on an issue not on the agenda? Anyone else? Yes, yes, please. And if I could ask politely for your name and address for the record, please.
Why, yes, you can. My name's Lopee LaRoe. I live on Granger Street in Rutland City.
Welcome.
Thank you, and I hope that this is appropriate. I don't know, like, it is the resolution that Michael is presenting, is that what we're not supposed to be doing, like?
He is actually going to be presenting that very soon, and at that point, we're going to have a discussion inside the rail, and then if anybody wants to speak on it, they can speak on it afterwards.
Afterwards, okay, great. Well, I'll just wait, then.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Okay, I think we are through the public section of our meeting, so now why don't we go ahead? Alderman Talbot.
All right, I'd like to present a resolution condemning tax on due process and affirming the constitutional rights of all people in Rutland. Whereas the United States Constitution guarantees due process, equal protection, and fundamental rights to all persons regardless of citizenship, immigration status, race, religion, or political belief, and whereas recent actions by federal authorities, including the detention of legal residents in Vermont without clear justification or timely access to legal counsel, represents a dangerous escalation of government overreach and a violation of these constitutional protections. And whereas history has shown that when the rights of any group are violated, it opens the door for similar abuses to be carried out against others, first against immigrants, then against dissenters, and eventually against anyone who does not conform to the views of those in power. And whereas the silence of public officials in the face of such abuses amounts to complicity, and failure to act now will only embolden those who seek to dismantle the rule of law and divide our communities through, through fear. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Aldermen of the city of Rutland unequivocally condemns all violations of due process and the weaponization of government power against any individuals. Be it further resolved that the city of Rutland affirms its unwavering commitment to protecting the constitutional rights of all people in our city regardless of citizenship status, national origin, political belief, or any other identity. Be it further resolved that the Board of Aldermen pledges to oppose any policy or action, local, state, or federal, that targets individuals based on who they are, where they come from, or what they believe, and to defend Rutland as a community rooted in justice, accountability, and the equal dignity of all. Be it further resolved that the mayor, the chief of police, and the city attorney shall review all relevant city policies, practices, and protocols to ensure that the city of Rutland actively upholds and protects the due process rights of all persons within its jurisdiction. Be it finally... its jurisdiction. Be it finally resolved that the Board of Aldermen formally invites the chief of police, commanders of the Rutland City Police Department, and leadership of the Rutland Police Union to sign this resolution in solidarity, affirming their shared commitment to constitutional rights, equal justice, and the safety and dignity of every member of our community.
Okay.
And I so move.
Second.
Okay. So my question would be, do we need to suspend the rules to take that up tonight?
I believe we would, as it would come up under new business.
So moved. Second.
All righty. So there's a motion to suspend the rules and take the issue up tonight. It's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. And go ahead, Alderman Talbot.
I'll move this motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Okay. So the motion is to approve the resolution as presented. It's been seconded. I'll open it up for debate. I have...
I just have a question whether we're circulating for signature, if that should be part of your motion.
Sure. Yes. To approve and circulate.
Approve and circulate.
Is the second or...
Yes.
Okay. We'll make that part of the motion. Okay. Alderman Donahue.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I have been looking at the petition. We just got it in the board packet. And I think that there is a lot in here that we can all agree to. But I would like to make an amendment. So my motion is going to be amend to amend the resolution. And I'd like to go through an amendment with strikeout and additions. And then with the hope that we can come up with a resolution that is equally effective for what the drafter has suggested here. But there are some concerns I have in it that may not be appropriate for us to be doing and directing certain people and so forth. So I'd like to suggest removing some of those things in an amended motion to strike an add, so that we might be able to come up with a resolution that we can all get behind. So if you'll allow me, I'll go through the resolution quickly and...
Please do.
And let you know what I'm suggesting. And in the beginning, I would like to strike the words condemning attacks on due process, and basically having a resolution affirming the constitutional rights of all people in Rutland. The first paragraph, I would leave intact. The second paragraph, I would leave intact, with the exception of the word "and" at the very end of the second paragraph. Only because I'm going to make as part of my amended motion, just removing the third paragraph in its entirety. And then in the fourth paragraph, removing the words "whereas the silence of public officials in the face of such abuses amounts to complicity and..." And we would start with a capital F on failure to act now will only embolden those who seek to dismantle the rule of law and divide our communities through fear. Going on to the next paragraph, this is one, two, three, four, five. I would leave all of that first sentence except just a period after process and remove the words "and weaponization of government against any individuals." In the next... Oh, I've got to count again. In the sixth paragraph, I'm only asking that we amend to remove the last three or four words, put the period after. So it would say constitutional... Let me just read it as I would say it. "Be further resolved that the City of Rutland affirms its unwavering commitment to protecting the constitutional rights of all people in our city, regardless of citizenship, status, national origin, political belief," period. And remove the words "and" or "any other identity." And then in the next paragraph, "be it further resolved..." I would just ask that we take out the words "based on who they are." So it would say, "The Board of Aldermen pledges to oppose any policy or action, local, state, or federal, that targets individuals, where they come from, what they believe, and to defend Rutland as a community rooted in justice, accountability, and equal dignity of all." In the last paragraph here on this page, and then there's one more, I would just say, "be it further resolved, the mayor and the city attorney..." I would remove the chief of police, and also the word "shall." What I'd like to add there would be, "be requested to review all relevant city policies, practices, and protocols to ensure the City of Rutland actively upholds and protects the due process rights of all persons within its jurisdictions." And then the last would be a strike of the entire paragraph. And basically, I don't think that the whole idea of creating the police commission was to put sort of a buffer in politics between this board and the police department. And so I'm asking we would remove that entire paragraph, because I don't think it's appropriate for us to impose our political will on the police department in this instance. And I would so move.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. And this is amendment, amended the original motion. Correct? So we'd be voting on the amendment?
Correct.
Correct? Yeah. So I'm so far so good. This is my third meeting back. So, city attorney, you have something for us?
No, I was just going to say that there was already a motion on the floor that hadn't been voted on. But if this is being considered an amendment to that, then there's no issue.
It's an amendment to the motion. Okay. So there's quite a bit there. I tried to get it all down. I'm not sure that I did, but I think I did. But anyway, we'll continue with the debate. And this is on the amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Alderman Talbot.
So I just wanted to make clear and sort of summarize for the public that Alderman Donahue's proposing to remove language condemning attacks on due process. Apparently, that's problematic language. Proposing to remove "whereas history has shown that when the rights of any group are violated, it opens the door for similar abuses to be carried out against others." That's apparently not appropriate for inclusion. That our silence would make us complicit is not appropriate for inclusion. Weaponization of government power against any individuals has been proposed to be struck. Protecting people based on any other identity is being proposed to be struck. And targeting of individuals based on who they are is proposed to be struck. This is all very troubling to me, that this language isn't... Someone isn't comfortable approving that in this resolution.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Further debate, yes, Alderman McClure.
Just to piggyback off Alderman Talbot's statement, Alderman Donahue's request to remove the line specifically "any other identity," I would double down on calling that troubling, as I myself would identify as somebody in an identity that is not listed here. Sexuality, queer people, the identities of queer people across the United States are being attacked on a daily basis. So I feel to remove the line "any other identity" takes away from protections for people who could be targeted for things other than citizenship, status, national origin, political belief. So I just wanted to echo Alderman Talbot's remarks on that statement.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go to Alderman Donahue, and then Alderman McClure.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the only reason that I had mentioned the second paragraph is because it refers to what history has shown. And I'm not sure that that's germane to the resolution. So it isn't against condemning that. It's basically against stating the history as it's outlined here. And as far as any other identity, I'd be happy to leave that in, given Alderman McClure's description. My concern was only leaving it in with any other identity. I personally would be concerned by any other identity being, whether it was a murderous member of MS-13, for instance, and that that was the identity. But if it is implied the way that Alderman McClure is suggesting, I would not want to remove that. So I guess I would amend my amendment to keep that included, if that makes sense. And I think I mentioned that in one other place, which is who they are in the next paragraph. And I'd be willing to certainly leave that in based on what they were just describing.
Okay. Thank you very much. All righty. Let's continue on, and then we'll try to figure it out before we vote. Alderman Talbot.
Thank you. I don't support any of the suggested changes proposed by Alderman Donahue. I support the resolution in its original form. I think it more adequately addresses the concerns that members of this community feel right now.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Talbot.
Yeah. And so when Alderman Donahue mentions that he wouldn't want to protect the rights of someone who was an accused murderer and gang member, that's kind of the point of this, right? Someone can accuse anyone of being something, and then if they're denied their due process to defend themselves, that's unconstitutional. And that's the sort of primary thrust behind this resolution.
Okay. Thank you very much. Alderman Heck.
Number one, I don't seem to have a copy of the resolution. I'm not sure.
It's in your packet.
It's in the packet. I've been through it. You know what? Approximate page, I have 150...
Sixty, sixty-one.
What's that?
Sixty and sixty-one, I believe.
Thank you. The second part of this is that, you know, when we get into the amendment aspect of this, and then we're amending amendments and amending amendments, it gets extremely confusing. I don't believe that folks want to send this back for a little deeper conversation in regards to that aspect. But I just want to make sure that it's done properly. There's a lot of people in the room tonight. A lot of these folks are going to have varying opinions on how this is going to work and stuff. So I'd like to make sure that it's vetted appropriately, and everyone has a say. And it's a document that we'll all be proud of when it's finished at the end.
Thank you. All righty. Anyone else? Okay. Yes. Alderman Kupali.
I'm going to refer to, I think it's the last paragraph. I think Vermont law enforcement, as I read, cannot use personal characteristics.
Point of order. Could Alderman Kupali please speak up? It's hard to hear you on this side of the room.
Sure. Sure. So it does say that law enforcement cannot go against citizenship or immigration status. So for the chief of police, again, to... Or any other law enforcement officer to sign this would definitely be against the rules.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Yes. Alderman McClure.
And just a question for process. Will we be opening this up to public comment outside of the rail before we vote on this with the proposed amendments, as I believe the version of the document people read or listened to and digested was the unamended version?
Yes. So certainly, anyone is going to be able to speak on this issue. I am going to try to put this together, amended the amendment, amended amendment. And while they're speaking, I will try to get that clarified up here. But right now, I'm as confused as everybody else. So why don't we see if anyone wants to speak outside the rail on the issue? Yes, please. Sorry.
Thank you.
And if I could politely ask your name and address for the record.
Of course.
Thank you.
My name is Norman Cohen. I live at 8 Barley Field here in Rutland. I came to Rutland in 1969. I've lived in the area, Rutland Town and Rutland City, the whole time. Some people still think I'm a flatlander, because I wasn't born here, including the late J. Fred Carbine, who was chair of the board. All kidding aside, I think you should pass this resolution as presented, not as amended. Tonight, each one of the members of the Board of Aldermen stood with their hand on their heart and pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's the last six words that grabbed me as I heard it, and I hope it grabbed you too. "One nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all." That's a pledge that I learned in kindergarten in 1947 in Washington, DC. Have we lived up to that pledge that each of you made tonight? I don't think so. Notwithstanding the Thirteenth, the Fourteenth, and the Fifteenth Amendments, the Civil Rights Act of 1963 that President Johnson signed after President Kennedy was assassinated, and many other pieces of legislation, we still are lacking in that pledge. So I commend Alderman Talbot for bringing it forward, and I urge you to vote against the amendment and for the language. It's a resolution. It's a commitment. It's a pledge. It's a promise of where we, as a city, stand. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Okay. All righty. Anyone else outside the rail that would like to speak? Please, come right up. Thank you very much. If I could just ask politely, once again, for your name and address for the record.
Yes. Thank you, presidential air. My name is Ethan Peppin, and I live at 73 South Main Street in Rutland City.
Thank you, Ethan.
You may hear something in this speech that's a little repetitive of what you just heard, so apologies. Not the most original idea, but I felt compelled to speak in support of the resolution as it is originally presented. Every meeting of this board begins with the pledge of allegiance, an affirmation of our shared commitment to liberty and justice for all. Those words are not ceremonial. They are a promise. And they carry weight only when our actions reflect them. The resolution before the board tonight is about living up to that promise. It's about affirming that due process, equal protection, and constitutional rights apply to everyone in our community, regardless of where they were born, what they believe, or what language they speak. By supporting this resolution as presented, the board has the opportunity to make clear that liberty and justice for all means exactly that, liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I want to go back out there, and then we'll come back in. Anyone else outside the rail? Yes, please, sir. Welcome. And again, politely, ask for your name and address.
Hi. My name is Evo... Do you hear me? My name is Evo Skoric. That's spelled I-V-O, but it's pronounced Evo. Yeah? Because in any other language but English, the letter "I" is pronounced "E," which means I'm an immigrant. Yes? I'm an immigrant. I live at 105 Robin Street since 2005 for 20 years.
Thank you.
And I'm a citizen since 2011. I pledged my oath in Burlington. I came to Vermont kind of like Mohsen, because this state always was a state of kindness and tranquility for me. I lived in New York City for many years. And when I first came to Vermont to work as a snowboard instructor at Killington, I was still an undocumented immigrant, pending asylum, in deportation proceedings. The only thing, in the 90s, nobody cared. I traveled across the country with my girlfriend. I got stopped in Kansas City for speeding. And they didn't even write me a ticket. I was in a big Crown Victoria driveway car, driving from New York City to San Francisco with my girlfriend and her two colleagues from Barnard College in New York. And they must have thought that I'm a pimp. And when they realized that those girls are from Columbia University, they just let us go. But you see, this country changed, and it changed for the worse. Because what is happening now, the people are just snatched from the street, like this Turkish lady at the college where my son is now, at college at Tafts. He saw it. And we are just appalled. And here in Rutland right now, I'm a member of the Board of Bridge to Rutland, which is an organization, nonprofit, that helps asylum lease in Rutland to settle and get their asylum process. We care for several families from Central America, and they are all afraid. They are all afraid. And this resolution is for them. We all know the situation with Syrians from a couple of years. How long ago was that, when Luras was mayor? Anyway, those Syrians who came here, and the Abogans, it's like 10 families, do we ever hear anything about them? Are they on drugs? Do they commit crimes? No. They pay taxes, they live their lives, and nobody knows anything about them, because they are okay and they're fine here. So I read Mike's resolution... So, I read Mike's resolution, and I don't find anything wrong with it. And then I heard Tom's comments, the amendment, and I don't quite understand what is the purpose of them. Because like, okay, the Third Amendment, what do we really get with Third Amendment? This is just a statement. It doesn't really compels anybody to do anything. It is not really, the words in Third Amendment are not actionable, yeah? But they are a statement of fact, and I can't find why would anybody have anything objectionable in that statement? I mean, do you disagree with what is said in the third paragraph? Or is your objection to it because you think that this can be misconstrued by the other authorities outside of the city? Do you think that this resolution is going to put us at odds with the federal authorities? I mean, I have no idea what else could your amendment really represent and what, where it is going. From my standpoint, we should just accept Mike's resolution because it is worded very benign and it is actionable. Now, can we compel police to do that? Does police want to do that? I'm going to leave that to the executive session here, but I think that this is something that we should do. This is something that Vermont stood for since the beginning of times. This is the state that abolished slavery first, you know? So Vermont was always a little bit advanced. I always tell my people in Europe, like when they say, "How is it United States?" Well, United States is like European Union. You have, in Europe, you have Bulgaria and you have Denmark, and in United States, you have Louisiana and you have Vermont, you know? So, and I came to Vermont. I chose Vermont for that, just like Mohsen-McDavid chose Vermont for that, yeah? So, yeah, in favor of Mike's resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else outside? Okay, I'm going to come back in, and I'm going to run through the, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Laurel.
Yes, I tried to speak before, but it was an inappropriate moment.
Yes.
I'm here to, in support of the unamended resolution that Michael presented, I just want to remind people that the slogan for Vermont is "Freedom and Unity," "Freedom and Unity." Myself, I am descended from people from Bavaria, from Ireland, from Canada, and I think if you're not, you're not descended from native people, everybody here is descended from immigrants unless your ancestors were enslaved and brought here against their will. So, I think that it's beautiful what you wrote, and it's beautiful to me that people are really fired up about this and want to protect our community members. Many of my friends are terrified right now across the whole country, and I think it's a beautiful thing that we should just unify around and not nitpick little words here and there, and please, just, just let's stand together. And what Michael said about due process is just so strikes to the heart of the matter. It's like you can just throw around like fear mongering and things about what people, who people are without due process, you know? It's all just accusations, and that can get out of control very quickly, as we see if we're students of history. So, I just urge the aldermen and women to please unify around this beautifully written resolution and for us as Rutlanders to unify as well. You know, we can always find common ground, you know, like do you grow tomatoes? Do you love your kids? You know, like, let's just find common ground in these troubling times. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're going to bring it back in here. Alderman Donahue?
Yeah, just to be clear on some of those comments, I agree with. And I did not ask to have that removed about due process or about citizenship status because, you know, if it weren't for the Irish, I wouldn't be here.
And probably a lot of us wouldn't, so. Before we take a vote on the amendment, I think we probably should walk through it and make sure that we all understand. Alderman Gillum?
Should we do them one at a time to make it easier for everybody to understand what we're doing here?
I asked if we could get it at one amendment, so we wouldn't be taking multiple votes to confuse the situation even more.
You're in multiple paragraphs here, that's the problem.
Yeah, we're going to go one at a time.
President Alair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Alderman Kupaly.
Thank you. This is a very complex issue, and understandably, there's a great deal of emotion. So, I'm asking if it would be appropriate to suspend the rules and bring this up in general committee?
So, that would not be a proper motion. I think what you're getting at, if I can help you out, is you want this referred to the general committee?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
There's a motion on the floor that takes precedent.
A motion to refer takes precedent.
I'll second for debate.
Okay. Motion to refer takes precedent. It's been seconded for debate, so that's on the floor. Alderman Talbot?
Yeah, respectfully, I don't think this is a complex issue. It's our constitutional rights, right? Like, we learn to say the Pledge of Allegiance when we're kindergartners. It's real simple. That's what this is about, protecting.
Okay. Thank you. Alrighty. Anyone else? Alderwoman Tadio?
I really don't want to send this to committee. I don't want to wait another two weeks. I think members of our community are very scared. They're concerned. They've showed up here today to express that they're concerned and that they're scared, and this is an answer to them saying that we've heard you and we are not going to allow your rights to be violated to the best of our ability. And so, I really think that we should support this resolution tonight as originally presented. I don't think that there is a need to send this to committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Donahue?
I haven't spoken on this motion yet, but I would also agree to vote on it now, not to refer to committee. So, I'll be voting no on referring to committee.
Okay. Again, the motion to refer is on the floor to general committee, and it's been seconded. Any further debate on that? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion fails. Alrighty. So, we're back at the amended motion. So, the amended motion has several amendments on it, which I tried my best to write down as you were going through them, Alderman Donahue, but what I'd like to do is run through them one more time, and when it's done, we're going to take a vote on the amendment. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty. So, if you could start at the top. You wanted to change the title of the resolution, correct?
Right. Just by striking condemning attacks on due process, just basically saying a resolution affirming the constitutional rights of all people in Rutland.
Okay. Alrighty. So, the first paragraph is the same. Second paragraph is the same.
Can I just read that out loud anyway? So, "Whereas the United States Constitution guarantees due process, equal protection, and fundamental rights to all persons regardless of citizenship, immigration, status, race, religion, or political belief, and would remain."
Alrighty. The second paragraph.
"Whereas recent actions by federal authorities, including the detention of legal residents in Vermont without clear justification or timely access to legal counsel, represents a dangerous escalation of government overreach and a violation of these constitutional rights, would remain." I just wanted to eliminate the word "and" because I'm suggesting we take out the history piece in.
Okay. So, the third, the third paragraph would be removed?
Yes, and that's just the one referring to a version of history that I don't know is even facts, but I, you know, don't have time to look at.
Are you serious?
Please, 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 please.
So, let me, so let me read it, since there seems to be some...
That's a shameful, hateful thing to say.
Right.
Well, I don't want to be targeted tonight. I'm trying to be helpful, but...
You're not being...
If we could just, if we could just get through the resolution, please.
Yeah, so it just basically says, "Whereas history has shown, when the rights of any group are violated, it opens the door for similar abuses to be carried out against others, first against immigrants, then against dissenters, and eventually against anyone who does not conform to the views of those in power." And I don't know if that's an accurate depiction of history. I don't know if it's even germane to this. We're supposed to be talking about constitutional rights for people of Rutland. Let's, let's keep it to that on this resolution, and so I'm suggesting just removing that.
And I'm going to ask, just that we can just get through it so we can have the actual vote, please. So, we are on the fourth paragraph.
Yeah, just removing, "Whereas the silence of public officials in the face of such abuses amounts to complicity, and, and just beginning with the statement, 'Failure to act now will only embolden those who seek to dismantle the rule of law and divide our communities through fear.'"
Okay. In the next paragraph, eliminate "and the weaponization of government power and individuals."
Yeah, so it would be, "Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Aldermen and City of Rutland unequivocally condemns all violations of due process."
Okay. The next paragraph, we're going to leave in or any other identity at the end.
That's right. So, we'd leave the complete paragraph in. "Be it further resolved that the City of Rutland affirms its unwavering commitment to protecting the constitutional rights of all people in our city regardless of citizenship, status, national origin, political belief, or any other identity."
Okay. The next paragraph is going to remain because we're going to leave in based on who they are.
Yes. "Be it further resolved that the Board of Aldermen pledges to oppose any policy or action local state or federal government that turn targets individuals based on who they are, where they come from, or what they believe, and to defend Rutland as a community rooted in justice, accountability, and the equal dignity of all."
Okay. The next paragraph, which is the last one on the front page.
Yes. "Be it further resolved that the mayor," and I just asked that we, and then remove the police chief because I'm concerned about the political, this board influencing the, or attempting to influence the police department, which is something that we have not done in such a manner, but say that the mayor and the city attorney, which is, would remain, and rather than saying shall, be requested to. And the reason is, we don't have the right to order the mayor and the city, well, maybe the city attorney, I don't know if you consider yourself working for the board or not, but we can't tell the mayor what to do. We can request it though. So, we just say, "Be requested to review all relevant city policies, practices, and protocols to ensure that the City of Rutland actively upholds and protects the due process rights of all persons within its jurisdiction."
Okay. And then the final paragraph is removed.
Yeah, again, for the same reason about influencing the law enforcement. "Be it finally resolved that the Board of Aldermen formally invites the Chief of Police Commanders, the Rutland City Police Department, and leadership of the Rutland City Police Unit to sign this resolution in solidarity, affirming their shared commitment to constitutional rights, equal justice, and safety and dignity of every member of our community." And Mr. Franzone didn't indicate that, you know, he was satisfied with that meeting he had with the police department, that this is not an issue, and so I'd rather remove the whole paragraph.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. So, I just went through that to make sure everybody understood what the amendment was. All right. It was agreed to that we were going to take a vote at the end of that. Alderwoman McClure, do you have anything new?
I just see that Mr. Franzone did raise his hand when Alderman Donahue spoke for him, and I just wanted to know if we could give him the opportunity to clear that statement up before we vote further on the motion, as it seems that Alderman Donahue's edits are based on statements made by Alderman, or Mr. Franzone?
So, I do want to get to the vote.
I have no objection to listening to this.
Yep. Mr. Franzone, do you have something that's new?
My exact statement was, "In light of the efforts for the peace chief, that we were going to rescind our demand, and we were going to leave it up to you guys to make that decision." So, I don't want to imply that I don't want this to happen.
Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Clifford, I am getting to the vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to point a clarification from the city attorney, if I could. On the last paragraph, it says, "The Board of Aldermen formally invites." So, if we formally invite, are they with, are they, could they like decline?
Sure.
Absolutely. It's just an invitation of if they want to voluntarily sign on. It's not a requirement.
Okay. All right. So, again, we've run through ad nauseam, I'm sorry, but I wanted to make sure everybody understood what the amendment was when we voted. Alrighty? So, we're ready for the vote. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying... A roll call has been requested by Alderwoman McClure.
I'll give her the second.
Second.
Roll call's been requested and it's been seconded.
Is Matt, Matt's not on?
No, he's not there.
All right.
No. So, this is on the amendment. The clerk shall call the roll.
Alderman Heck?
If I just may. This is a vote.
On the amendment. Correct.
No.
Alderman Kupaly?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
No.
Alderman Talbot?
No.
Alderwoman Tadio?
No.
Alderman Donahue?
Yes.
Alderman Gillum?
No.
Alderman woman McClure?
No.
And Alderwoman Davis?
No.
Seven to two.
Eight to two?
Seven.
Seven?
Seven to two.
I lost track. Seven. One, two, three, four. Okay, seven noes, two yeses. The amendment fails. So, we're back to the original motion, which is to pass the resolution as presented.
Roll call vote.
And a roll call has been requested on that.
Do we have to have a second again?
Second.
It's been seconded. Alrighty. Any, this is the original resolution as presented.
And will it be circulated after if it's approved?
And it's been, and the part of the motion was to circulate for signatures. Correct. Yes.
Ready?
Any further debate? Seeing none. The clerk shall call the roll, please.
Alderman Heck?
Yes.
Alderman Kupaly?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Yes.
Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tadio?
Yes.
Alderman Donahue?
Yes.
Alderman Gillum?
Yes.
Alderwoman McClure?
Yes.
And Alderwoman Davis?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no. Motion passes. Thank you all for coming. We're going to allow a short break, so those who would wish to depart may before we commence with the rest of the meeting. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Thank you all. Where we left off was communications from the mayor. We had moved his nominations up to the end of the meeting, but he has a couple of other things that he would like to speak on, so.
Great.
Mayor, don't just floors yours.
Thank you. I promised the board president that I would keep it relatively short, so let me start with this. I have had conversations with potential people for the rec superintendent position, and I know you're all waiting for information on that. I'm going to be putting together a search committee that includes community members, Board of Aldermen members, Rutland City residents, and someone from the school board. I'll be sending you all a detailed email on this process tomorrow morning, probably about 11 o'clock. I just want to get out of my meeting so that you understand how that's going to work. The idea is to do this swiftly but precisely so that we are not relying heavily, too much more heavily on the staff at the rec. They've been doing a great job covering the gaps. I know we're going to hear from Director Dolan in a little bit about some of that, but I did want to mention the fact that they have really stepped up again, and while there are some gaps, my office is trying to help them fill those as quickly as possible. I'd like to ask the board to refer the city's nuisance, this is a new policy, the nuisance policy, to charter an ordinance for discussion. There is a gap between us ticketing people that are not following our ordinances and us condemning their properties. Those are the two options that we have, right? When people don't pay for their tickets, when they don't clean up their act, so to speak, and that's usually where the issues are, there's the only next step, the only next step we have is to condemn their property, and we believe that there's some steps in between that we have within our charter that can, that we can take some additional action. So, that is the news, I'd ask to refer the nuisance policy to charter and...
So, second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Anyone have any questions for the mayor on that? Yep, Alderman Clifford?
I want to say thank you for doing that. I know I've had complaints about a couple of areas around the city, and I've actually went and witnessed it. It's pretty bad, so I appreciate you doing that.
No problem.
next step we have is to condemn their property, and we believe that there's some steps in between that we have within our charter that can, that we can take some additional action. So that is the news, I'd ask to refer the nuisance policy to charter and ordinance.
So, second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Anyone have any questions for the Mayor on that? Yep, Alderman Clifford?
I want to say thank you for doing that. I know I've had complaints about a couple of areas around the city, and I've actually went and witnessed it, it's pretty bad, so I appreciate you doing that.
No problem.
Okay. And Alderman Gillum?
Just to make you aware, I'm pretty sure you're aware, our building inspectors are actually writing tickets, but the rental units, the people who are renting are not carrying it out, and they're still, we still have behavior issues, we have trash issues, and we have noise issues, especially in the Northwest District. And the teeth is not strong enough.
That's right.
To deal with this. So I'm, will definitely like to be involved in getting that fixed.
Wonderful. That's a perfect highlight Alderman Gillum has, is the teeth are not strong enough, and we need stronger teeth.
And maybe that conversation could include exactly what building and zoning has the ability to do, up to what point, and then, when does it become a legal issue? Because we all get frustrated, unfortunately, with building and zoning, because someone's living next door to that mess.
That's right.
That's been happening for months and months and months. So, that might help us a little more, just to understand what they can do, what they can't do, and where we can get more involved in the process to help them be successful.
Thank you.
And not to get into the debate, but I did get stopped this weekend from someone who'd received a ticket from building and zoning for, I think it was a chair out on the, on their front lawn, and they were, I don't know if it was happy, I don't think they were happy about it, but, but anyway, I think a discussion about what we can and what we can't, and what's appropriate is probably in line, so I appreciate that. Any further debates? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you for your support on that. I know it's an issue for a lot of our community members, and they're going to be happy to hear that we're working on it. I did have the opportunity to go to Montpelier last week on Thursday and testify on our four charter changes, the one from November and the three, and the three from this past March. It is currently in the Gov Ops Committee. It is House Bill 504. If you would like to look it up, you can take a look at the changes that the legislature, or that legal, that council has made at the legislative level. It is not significant from what we have, it is just like, basic language changes, and that'll be, they'll continue discussion on that, and that will hopefully pass by the end of, end of the legislative session. I do want to, my last thing, I do want to announce two retirements, both from DPW. First, Jim Mumford retired on April 17th with 14 years of service, and then, on April 23rd coming up, Gail Garuso, or now Gail Wells, has retired with nine years of service. So I just wanted to say thank you to both of them for their service.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you very much. Alderman Donahue?
Can I just ask, Mayor, so we had this memorandum from Megan LaChance regarding the appointments, and just to kind of outline our process and our timeline, so, I guess, so we had 90 days to make, to make the appointments?
I have 90 days to make an appointment, and if I don't, as far, yeah, if I don't, I believe that the Board has the ability to make an appointment if they so choose.
And that's on, according to Megan's, that's the attorney's memo, June 14th is what the conservative version of her recommendation is.
Yes.
So, you were, and I was just trying to catch what you were saying, because it's new to me, I hadn't heard this before, but you were putting together a search committee, is that what you're?
That's, that's what I'm saying. Yep. And, and like I said, I want to include two Board of Aldermen members on that search committee. I still have to talk to the President about that and make sure that we do it without a quorum and who he wants to see on that committee.
So then, sometime in May, then you'd have to have a name?
I'd like to move-
They have a table up still for two weeks, right?
I'd like to move that fast. Again, you know, if we're, if we're not moving that quickly, I'd, you know, I'd ask the Board to give me some grace in that particular process, but it's up to you guys what you want to do.
Yeah, I'm just, feel like, concerned about the summer.
I, I am as well, and that's why we've been working to try to, try to work through the issues there and try to give the REC department as much support as possible. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All righty, let's get into the consideration of special event permit requests. First one is the Rutland Farmers Market, from May 10th, outside Farmers Market, from May 10th, 2025 to October 25th, 2025, every Saturday, 9:30 to 2:00, and June 9th to October 1st, which are Wednesdays from 11:00 to 5:00. So, Alderwoman McClure.
Are there representatives from the Farmers Market here tonight to speak on the event permit? I have a couple of questions due to an email I received.
Well, I think if there is, they probably heard what you just said, and there is, so, you're certainly welcome to step right up. And welcome. If I could get your name and address politely for the record.
Yes, I'm Mort Brown, and I'm president of Rutland County Farmers Market, and Ann Finley is our new market manager, voted in and hired this year, and we're here to request the use of the park. I have the registration form in with the city and also with the Recreation Department, and the only thing is, we're waiting on our proof of insurance, so our documents are in order for this upcoming season. I have one concern that I'm sure that most of the Board members are aware of. It appears that some of the vendors are not really coming through on the 1% citywide tax, and so I went down to the city clerk's office, and she showed me the information that they should receive concerning this. I made personal copies of that information. I copied a page involving understanding City of Rutland's local option tax. That, along with the receipts of taxes for the 1% charge, this document is to be filled out by every vendor that is applicable for sales tax as well as rooms and meals. And we have 50 copies of that. Our annual meeting occurred after I met with the gal from the tax department, so I passed them out at our Board of Directors meeting and the annual meeting itself. Ann is going to make sure that at First Market, everyone receives a copy of these two statements so they realize their obligation to the city as well as the state of Vermont, because the taxes are due with the state of Vermont as well. The gal at the office explained, and I explained to my Board of Directors to pass the word on, that they, each vendor is to record what they have sold that is applied to this 1%. Keep a record of that on basically a weekly basis, so if you attend 10 markets, you should have 10 statements of what you sold that is applicable to the tax. And then, the tax department wants individual vendors to come in after market's over, which would be the month of November, and I explained this to them, to settle up with the 1% tax that is due directly to the city, because Burlington and Rutland, Vermont are the two cities in the state that have requested that they collect their own tax, and if you're in a different township that doesn't have that situation, then you have to do it differently. But for anything that's sold in Rutland, okay, that must be paid as a 1% at the end of the year, at the end of the market season. I'm also going to reinforce the aspect of their legal responsibility. You're looking at a potential fine if you do not comply, and ultimately, if the situation warrants, then we can pull their right to vend with us, as well as vend in any of the city parks or city lands. That should help with the final. Hopefully, that wouldn't have to go to that extreme, but I'm going to make everyone available fact that they are responsible, as business people, to conduct themselves in the proper manner. So we are on top of that. I'm sorry for the situation. Oftentimes, we have a flux of vendors that come to our market, they leave in the middle of the season, they may be daily, only come once in a while. I think part of it, and I'm going to tell them, that if you have some doubts, even after reading the section here that's been passed out to you about what qualifies for the tax, if you have some doubts, come down to the tax office, and somebody will help you in there, decide whether this particular item is, in fact, viable for the 1% tax. So, hopefully, we can get that, that situation right down to snuff 100% this year.
Okay. Good, good. We've got a couple of folks who would like to either ask you a question or make a statement. Alderwoman McClure?
Mr. Brown, you answered almost every single question I had, so, amazing. My only other follow-up question is, would you be able to provide the city with a list of the people who sign up to vend in Rutland for the course of the summer market? That way, we can follow up with them if they choose to not come in and see us in November, as you've advised them to?
Well, I think the situation is such that I would like the vendors to come to you because I have no way of really knowing what they're going to bring from one week to the next to market, and it does vary from one season to another, okay? Depending upon, you know, maybe you've got some items you only sell in the fall, okay? So, I guess, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to first impress upon them that they need to come down here and visit with the gal, and you're definitely going to get those people that come in November, they have their names and addresses, and you can start to compile a list, but as I say, it's going to vary through the season, and it'll vary from year to year. So, I'll, I'll ask the other market what their feeling is on it. The Vermont Farmers Market is also present in the park, and see what they think as well, okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Alderwoman Tadio?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
So there's a motion to suspend the rules and take the issue up tonight? It's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Alderwoman Tadio?
And I will make a motion to approve the Rutland Farmers Market special event permit from May 10th, 2025 to October 25th, 2025, every Saturday from 9:30 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. And June 9th, 2025 to October 1st, 2025, every Wednesday from 11 a.m. till 5:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Alderman Gillum?
I don't have the document from, is there a fee on there for the year?
No, that was already done. That was already done.
What's the fee?
I believe it's 500.
Right.
500?
Right.
Okay. Mr. President?
I'm having an issue with that, because it costs our Public Works Department that amount of money every week to move the, the equipment in and out during, when we set it up during the morning, and then we take it down the end of the day. Takes four guys to go in and change the whole traffic pattern. That is a cost to the city, and I'm, I'm not against the Farmers Market, don't get me wrong, and I'm a free enterprise guy. It's just, the city is subsidizing this, this program a little bit, which, it's okay, but now it's becoming very expensive and it's putting pressure on our budget for Public Works. And I don't even know what Recreation's doing, because I don't have that number, but I do have Public Works. So we need to be aware of that. Something we might have to do next year is adjust these rates to cover some of our expenses, and then what are we doing? My other question is, what are we doing with the trash? Who's handling the trash?
Okay. So, I'll come to you just in a second, if I could, Alderwoman.
I was just going to say, that's not the discussion on the floor, the discussion is just for the, the market to open for those dates of service. The issue with the fee was discussed prior, so it's appropriate to bring it up, it can go get referred to committee, but it's not for debate on this evening.
Yeah, I wasn't here when the issue was debated on the fee, so, do you, would you like to respond to Alderman Gillum?
Well, I guess, I'd like to say that the value of Farmers Market to the Rutland community is oftentimes not realized because of the fact that many of us farmers, when we have extra produce, donate it to the food shelves here in Rutland, and that helps the homeless situation, and there's a lot of pressure on churches, et cetera, to get people fed. I will tell you right up front that, yes, it's a good deal for me to come to Rutland and vend my product, but you are receiving over 230 dozen eggs down here to the community shelf from my farm in the middle of the winter, when it's most desperate for food, to feed many of these people that are on hard luck. And that amounts to about $1,850 of product that I've donated to the Rutland region as a farmer to help the community survive and flourish. So yes, you're giving me a break as far as my rent is concerned, but I'm still paying pretty heavily fees to be part of my market, because we have expenses with advertising, with personnel, that we salary, and so I really feel strongly that, and I'm not the only one in the market that does these kind of things undercover, that as Alderman, you probably are not aware of. I've held my mouth in my speech for a number of years over this particular topic, but I've decided that it's not a brag, it's just simply that, look at the situation from the standpoint of how it spreads out to the community. What is the benefit to everybody, okay? You're benefiting me, hey, I'm turning right around, and I'm trying to benefit the citizens of Rutland City.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I just say one thing? The Rutland Food Co-op is responsible for the trash. They bring the trash cans in every Saturday morning, they come and they pick them up, they come halfway through the market and they take the trash out, back to the co-op, and they take care of the recycling and the trash. So it's not costing the city.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Yes, Alderman Gillum?
I just want to make a comment. The Farmers Market does not provide a special benefit to tax people like our other downtown people do, so they pay heavy to be downtown. So, I'm having a little issue, it's, it's not a fair balance between the business people and the Farmers Market. So, you know, yeah, we're, we're providing them space, and the taxpayers are paying for that, I have, you know, I have a little problem with that, but I'm not against the Farmers Market. I think the Farmers Market's wonderful for downtown, but it needs to be on a balanced playing field. And I would like to refer that to committee, Community Development Committee.
Okay, why don't we refer that after we vote on this? Okay, so the motion is to approve the special events permit for the Rutland Farmers Market, for the aforementioned dates. Anybody else? Any further debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes. Alderman Gillum?
To move the fees and the cost of the Farmers Market to Finance Committee.
There's a second?
Second.
There is a second. All righty. Motion's been made and seconded. Any debate on that? Fees to the farmer, or for the Farmers Market to Finance. Alderman Donahue?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem putting things in committee, as you know, but I'm just going to say that, speaking against the motion, because having run the Chamber of Commerce here for over two decades, I know how important an attraction it is to bring people in downtown, and how important an economic driver it can be on Saturdays and even Wednesdays. So I would completely agree that a reduced permit would be in order, given that they're a destination, they're an attraction, and many small local farmers trying to, trying to make a, you know, a decent day's wage in our downtown, in our downtown. So if anything, I think we should be putting more money maybe into marketing that attraction and opportunity, trying to tax them more.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Motion is to refer the aforementioned issue to Finance?
Point of order.
Yes.
I believe Alderman Gillum's original motion was for community and economic development, correct?
No, I changed my mind.
Oh, it was to Finance.
I misheard then, my bad.
Dealing with fees, it should go to Finance.
Alrighty, well, once again, the motion has been made to refer to Finance. It's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, the chair is in doubt, so all those in favor, could you please raise your hand? One, two, three, four, five. And those against? Two, seven, three. Five to three, motion fails for lack of six, so motion fails. Alrighty, so the special event permit has been approved. I think you're all set.
Thank you.
Okay, alrighty. Thank you very much. Alrighty, moving right along. Reports and letters from department heads and officials. Barbara Spalding. You have a couple of issues here for us tonight, Barbara?
I do, and I just want to thank both of the buyout applicants that are here tonight. They're sitting through such a very long meeting. Appreciate their patience. So the first one is for Faith McClure, who is requesting a $10,000 buyout forgivable loan and referral to Heritage Family Credit Union for a secured loan of up to $50,000 to assist in her new business, Bailey's Place. Bailey's Place is located at 13 Evelyn Street and will serve food and spirits, as well as be a place where the LGBTQ plus community feel welcome. The location required extensive renovations, equipment, and supplies to open. The total financial investment of this project to date is over $100,000, and the application meets the criteria for the request through an excess of $20,000 of new financial investment. The RRA Board met and voted to recommend to this board approval of the request for the $10,000 forgivable loan and referral to Heritage Family Credit Union for a secured loan, and Faith is here this evening to discuss her vision and answer any questions.
Welcome.
Hi, y'all. Pleasure to meet you. Can you hear me fine?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
As Ms. Spalding just said, my name is Faith Ann McClure. I've lived in the Rutland area since 2003, my birth year. I'm 21. I'm a part of the queer community. I've been out since middle school, and the whole idea of Bailey's is to be a space for the community, like Ms. Spalding just reiterated, but it's more than just a spot for all of us to come together. It's an entire place for all of us to feel welcome, to know that it's going to be there the next day, to feel safe, to feel welcome, to have food with your friends and your family, to make new friends and family, because a lot of us in the community don't have family anymore, especially after coming out. Some of us are moving down here, some of us have just been here our whole lives, and we need to make sure that that spot is available for us. I myself only found out about the Pride Center about a year ago, and before then, even when I came out of middle school, there wasn't that much of a safe area to discuss this with, you know, with my fellow members of the community. I was lucky enough, growing up, that, you know, I had accepting friends and family and my peers, though there was a betting pool going on on my sexuality, which I think is pretty obvious, they were mainly accepting, you know, a joke here or there, but never any real merit behind it. And I would have killed for a spot like Bailey's when I was younger. I mean, I'm excited to be owning it. I'm 21 years old. I'm stoked to know that this point in my life, I am doing something that has impacted so far greatly so many people. I have members coming up to me off the street, shaking my hands, hugging me, thanking me, being like, oh my God, we finally have a spot in Rutland. We're so excited, and it's just so exciting to be a part of it, mainly for the main part of opening Bailey's, and also just knowing that I'm impacting a lot of people, both young and old, because I can't speak for all, but those who are older than me by many lengths in their lives didn't have a spot to come out to. I mean, a lot of you can probably attest that coming out wasn't always a safe spot for the older board members and the older people in this room that aren't on the board. It's just Bailey's is needed, you know? We're needed in Rutland, and I hope everyone agrees to that, and I know not everyone will. But I appreciate you all for giving me my time to speak and explain myself on the front of Bailey's. And even if you don't like Bailey's for what we stand for, I hope you also still like us, you know, for our food. Because I will say this, Big Lenny's been feeding me, and I've gained a couple of pounds. Very welcomed, though. That man could cook. But I really just hope that, you know, y'all see what we're trying to do here, and that's a big part of it, too. Any questions?
Well, I think we're going to initiate a conversation. Alderman Donahue.
Congratulations on opening Bailey's Place.
Thank you.
Very exciting to be a business owner at age 21, and I will make a motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you very much. Motion has been made to suspend the rules and take the issue up tonight. It's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Alderman McClure.
I'm not sure if I was supposed to vote on that motion, as I meant before Faith came up. I need to recuse myself from voting on this matter. Faith is my younger sister, and I am incredibly proud, but just for risk of conflict of interest, I don't know if I should vote on it.
We'll make a note of that.
But if I have the board president's permission, I would like to share just a brief statement of support as a non-voting entity.
Sure, go right ahead.
As a queer person who sits on the side of the rail, as a queer person who grew up here, and I promise being queer is not hereditary, as far as I know. Our parents just lucked out with two of us. It is so, so incredible to see a space like this come together in our community. Faith did not mention it on her opening night, she hit maximum capacity seven times. There were people from as far south as Brattleboro and far north as Burlington here to celebrate diversity, equity, and inclusion in Rutland City. And I just want to say, I am so, so proud of my younger sister, and I hope you guys are just as proud of her as I am, so, but I promise I can't vote, so.
Alright, and go ahead, Alderman.
Yes, and I will make a motion to approve the $10,000 buyout forgivable loan to Bailey's Place and the referral to HFCU for a secured loan for Bailey's Place.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion that been made and seconded to approve. Any questions, debate on that motion? Alderman Donahue.
So one for Barbara Spalding, actually. I just, on the Business Assistance, Business Incentive Assistance Program. It's half the tax revenue generated from private solar developments in Rutland City. The issue is, what is in the kitty? Do we know?
Oh, I wish Mary Markowski was here, because she would know the exact number, but I think there is approximately $230,000 still in the kitty.
So it's somewhere in there. Close enough. Other than that, I just want to thank you for a comprehensive application, and thank you for getting the business plan to us earlier, so I could review that, and it's all there, so. And voting aye.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes. Congratulations.
I hope y'all come down for some food later this week. Big Lenny's going to be cooking up something good.
Alright. Barbara, you have something else for us?
I do. If Emily would join me. Emily Field is requesting a $10,000 buyout forgivable loan and referral to Heritage Family Credit Union for a secured loan of up to $50,000 to assist in her new business, Heritage Workshop. Heritage Workshop is located at 148 North Main Street, and it is an antiques restoration and furniture repair business. The total financial investment of this project is anticipated to be around $32,000, $33,000. The application meets the criteria for the request through an excess of $20,000 of new financial investment. The RRA Board recommends to this board approval of the request for the $10,000 forgivable loan and referral, and Emily is here to discuss her business and answer any questions.
Okay, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Emily Field. I have been waiting for this meeting for weeks and wondering what I would say, and I still don't know, because I'm just so excited to have this opportunity to start this business here, especially in Rutland. I just moved here five years ago. I grew up coming here. All my uncles live in the area, all of my family, and I loved it. I'm from Michigan. It's very flat. And I fell in love with Rutland when I was four years old. And to be able to come here and start this business has meant the world to me and my family. My background is in museum studies and archives, and I did that for 12 years. And I loved it. I have a lot of passion for it, but I felt as though I wasn't accomplishing what I set out to do, and that was to save history and help people save their family's history. And in doing restoration, in doing just basic furniture repair, I don't care if it's an IKEA shelf or if it's a Steinway piano. What we own matters, and how we take care of it matters. When you come home at the end of the day, if your table's about to fall over, and you've had a hard day at work, I mean, it can make or break a person, honestly, and I want to be available for the whole range of that. I want to help people. I'm looking, I have been taking courses in alternative financial structures to help folks from all financial situations be able to repair their things, because sustainability is also a big part of this. It's family history, it's personal health, and it's planetary health. So yeah, I am really excited to get this going. Just in the first month, we've already got three contracts for a good amount of work, so it's off to a good start.
Okay, good. So we've got several folks who would like to speak. Alderman Gillum, I saw you first.
Like to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
Alrighty, motion's been made to suspend and take the issue up tonight. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. And approval? Motion is to approve the aforementioned request
Second.
For the buyout loan, and it's been seconded. Alright, we'll open it up for debate on that. Alderman Donahue.
Same comment, comprehensive application, appreciate your business plan, and some pretty good paying jobs come along, too, so. I'm voting aye.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Alderman Gillum?
We have a little problem with this desk here. Maybe it's something you can do there. I know he's got a problem with his, so maybe the...
Well, we did that on purpose, Alderman Gillum.
I am.
So that's the type of work you can do, right?
At my previous job, I worked for the State House every winter, so, yeah.
You might have another customer if you get to me.
Okay, alrighty. Anyone else seeing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. So it looks like Tyler Dollin is next. And we appreciate you coming in, give us an update
Sure.
On the summer camps and aquatic program. I guess I'll just ask if we could get the executive summary.
Well, I mean, my hope was actually to refer it to the Recreation Committee.
Okay.
I think it's more suited for that environment than it is here tonight. I mean, it's been a lot of work for us to pick up. I mean, Kim was a 40, 50, 60-hour employee that we've had to try to cover, so I would like to refer this discussion of summer camps and aquatics and Recreation Committee. There is one that's already pre-scheduled for April 28th at 5:30 downstairs, so.
Second.
Okay, so the motion has been made to refer, and it's been seconded. Anybody have any questions on that one? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
I do just, I guess, want to say, you know, I hope going forward through this process of whatever it looks like, the superintendent, I mean, I hope that we have a say in it as a recreation department. I mean, this has affected us more than anybody that is in this room, and I just hope that our voice can be heard and it's respected when it is heard, so. Other than that, my next item is, we met with the Finance Committee a couple weeks ago, and I think there's the update at the Finance Committee, so I kind of need, I need to get approval after the approval of the motions that were occurred at the Finance
You go right ahead, and I'll...
Alright, so at the Finance Committee, Mary had made a couple motions to reallocate some of the funds that were formerly known as ARPA. $40,000 of that money was going to be put into the Main Street Park project. Currently, we have $400,000. That would give us $440,000. So the request, I guess, from myself, and I ran it by Sharon quickly before, I wanted to say it because it's kind of long, permission to sign and approve from the board a change order from Russell Construction in the amount of $70,937.40 for the column replacement in the gazebo at Main Street Park, pending the approval of a motion in the Finance Committee of the reallocation of $40,000 to the Main Street Park project from the funds formerly known as ARPA, as they were previously allocated to Alderman Chamber upgrades.
You did that very well.
Thank you.
Alderman Donahue.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules and take this matter up tonight.
Second.
Alrighty, and there's a second. Motion's been made and seconded to take it up. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Alderman Donahue.
And I will make the motion that Tyler just made. I will also move that.
Second.
Alrighty, so the motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, concerns on what's going to happen here? Alderman Donahue.
Just a timeline. I know that you're in June, should I hear?
The hope, again, the hope for us, we talked to the folks from Russell Construction last week. DPW is graciously, like I said multiple times, looking to help us with the sidewalks through the park. The hope for us is to have the gazebo open for the 25th, which will be the first concert of the summer series. So that is our goal. We will look at these columns and some additional other upgrades, and the hope is that we can do the column replacements in Lou and while the concert series is going, so we can replace a few, get the concert done, get back to work, replace a few, and move through it like that. So the hope is, obviously, the first one will take the longest, because we've got to figure out how to do it, or Russell does anyway, and then, you know, hopefully we can get a couple a day or something like that. So hopefully, within a couple week period, they'll all be done. And, you know, Paul Gallo of Magic Brush, Paul is committed to us helping to remove any issues that we have with paint on it, and then in-house, we will be doing the tongue and groove ceiling that is inside of it. So it's a great community project, you know, Paul's also, you know, with Paul's gracious gesture of just labor, that helps the city out greatly, because otherwise, we would have to pay a contractor to come in to do that. So thank you to Paul Gallo for that offer, so 25th, that's the hope.
Okay, alrighty. I lost track of where I was, so.
You good with me?
The motion for permission to approve and sign the change order.
There you go.
Pending city attorney, pending the motion from the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Alrighty, anyone else on that one? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Alright, next up is Ed Bove, Planning Director. Bove, Rutland Regional Planning Commission 2026 Regional Plan and Regional Future Land Use Map. That's a mouthful. Evening, Ed.
Hi, thank you for having me. I was originally just a warm body up here to refer this to committee. Devin from the IRPC put a memo together asking for a date in there, but with that, I've left a pretty hefty packet on each of your desks, kind of describing a little more about what's going on here and what the Community and Economic Development Committee is going to be looking at. So they are going to talk about the future land use map, which is the regional future land use map, that has to work with our future land use map that we have in our municipal plan. And so what I've put in front of you are a copy of the map that's in effect now, which is the regional plan, and then the... And then the link to the new future land use map, which is what is going to be discussed at this committee meeting. So between now and then, if members of this board be able to go and compare the proposed new map, what's in effect now, then the discussion when this is referred to committee will be more fruitful. I've also included a little description of the designation process, what's changing, what came out of Act 181 last year. So that's in there as well. And also, because you might not have seen recently, some copies of some other maps that we have in the city which all correspond with this map. So there is a, our existing designation map, which has our designated downtown and the neighborhood development area in there. Again, that's going to be changed, so that map will go away with what this new map is. There is the zoning map, which is also important because that is the regulatory map that talks really about density and what you can have where in the city. So again, that corresponds with this future land use map. And then finally is the TIF map, which is something we're going to talk about later tonight, but also works in with this future land use map. So between all those things there, I think you'll be able to become well armed and well versed in this topic. So when it does get referred to committee, it'll be a good discussion.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
So you're looking for a referral, correct?
Yes, that's in the memo that Devin put together.
Motion to refer to Community and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Alrighty, motion is to refer and it's been seconded. Alderwoman Davis?
Just a question, Ed, because it states to have a meeting Monday, April 28th at 5:30, but we previously have a meeting scheduled with Recreation. So is that date?
I don't, I don't know the date. That was just requested from the IRPC. I'm looking at Maggie from the IRPC as well. But that, but that was the date that they requested, so I have no control of that.
The Chair, Alderman Donahue, can reach out to see if we can just change that date as we have a previous meeting that night. Pardon?
Are you on both?
I am.
Oh, okay.
Just that part I got is on my page for this week, so you wouldn't hear it back until Monday at the early.
Okay, so the motion's been made to refer and it's been seconded. Any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. I think we're all set.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for coming. Chief Kiel Cullen, you are next on the docket.
Thank you. For those who were on the board in 2023, and really for those who weren't, you may remember in March of '23, the City Attorney drafted a memo to the board announcing that the city had begun to receive opioid settlement funds after the city had signed on in a class action lawsuit against pharmaceutical manufacturers and distributors. To date, the city's received a significant amount of money. With that memo, there was also a list of opioid remediation uses. Very recently, we've identified a few projects that we need to, that we've begun, that we need to continue, and we need to access these funds for those purposes. The memo, I think you may have tonight, sort of highlights a couple of what those projects are. We brought the matter to the Board of Finance for discussion and directed to the board to seek a referral to the Finance Committee to identify allocation, the process for allocation of these funds. So that's the request here tonight.
Okay.
I'll move to refer the requests for funding for opioid settlements to the Finance Committee.
Second.
Alrighty, motion's been made to refer to Finance. It's been seconded. Anyone with any questions for the chief? I'm glad to see this coming to fruition because I played a little role in some of that back in the day. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Okay, Treasurer Markowski is not here.
I'll make a motion to move the financial reports to the Finance Committee.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made to refer the reports for the Finance, to the Finance Committee from Treasurer Markowski. It's been seconded. Any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Alrighty, let's go into standing committee reports. First one up is Alderman Donahue, Community and Economic Development Meeting from April 9th.
Yeah, geez, I'm already exhausted, Mr. Chairman. I'll see if I can get this right. There's a lot to this, but I have a lot of answers, so. I'm going to start, though, with the first one, which I think is the simpler of the two. Our Community and Economic Development Committee met on April 9th with two topics. The TIP District Tax Increment Financing District Master Plan Boundary Adjustment as per VEPSE, Economic Progress Council, and the RRA Tax Stabilization Recus for 24 Whale Street. Coincidentally, they're both on the same property. The Community and Economic Development Committee of the Rutland City Board of Aldermen met on Wednesday, April 9th at 5:00 PM in the Lamontane Room at City Hall. The members present included Alderman Donahue, Chair, Alderwoman Sharon Davis, Vice Chair, and Alderwoman McClure. A quorum was present and voting. Also in attendance, Aldermanic President David Laird and Alderman Talbot. Alderwoman Tarrio was also in attendance remotely. Other city officials attending included Mayor Dungus, City Attorney LaChance, City Assessor Langloy, Zoning Administrator Luke Alexander, and the RRA Director of Grants and Outreach, Barbara Spalding. Members of the public included the property owner, developer Claire Purcell, Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region Executive Director Lyle Jepson, and Cedars Operations Manager Cooper Babbitt. Members of the press included Gordon Driscillow, City Hall Reporter at the Rutland Herald. And Chair Donahue opened the meeting at 5:00 PM and let the record note that the audio recording didn't start immediately, so the first motion was restated to accommodate the recording and to document it for the record. Specifically being considered were, and number one, we'll start with that, the adjustment in the TIF boundaries to reflect removal of the property of 24 Whale Street from the TIF District Master Plan. Regarding item number one, Chair Donahue outlined for the committee the task at hand, specifically the requested boundary adjustment needed to satisfy the Vermont Economic Progress Council's conditional approval of the Rutland City TIF District Master Plan. Due to the project construction being already underway at 24 Whales, specifically in this case, well, several projects there actually, not specific just to the condos. The property cannot be included because it is, could not satisfy what they call the but-for clause. But not for this assistance with tax increment financing, the project would not go forward. Chair Donahue noted that the district map includes the same 11 identified development projects, and the eight identified infrastructure projects in the original plan as approved by the Board of Aldermen at their meeting of January 6th, 2025. VEPSE's conditional approval of the master plan notes a return to VEPSE with each specific project under the phase filing. The Board of Aldermen would need to approve the boundary adjustment, quotes around that, at their meeting of April 21st tonight, to be approved by VEPSE at their meeting as soon as April 24th, 2025. Alderman Davis moved to recommend approval to the full Board of Aldermen on April 21st the Tax Increment Financing District Master Plan with the one condition change for the VEPSE meeting scheduled for March 24th, adjusting the boundaries, effectively removing the property of 24 Whale Street, Rutland, Vermont. Motion was seconded by Alderman McClure. The motion passed on a vote of three yes and zero no. Voting in favor were Chair Donahue, Vice Chair Davis, and Alderwoman McClure. The only other area that's carved out is the West Street Cemetery. This sort of carves out, if you will, in this sort of, quote, goes around boundary adjustment, 24 Whale Street. And I so move.
Second.
Alrighty, so the motion's been made and it's been seconded. Any debate, any questions for Alderman Donahue on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah?
Second right I'm up is the, back to our municipal tax stabilization for the property development at 24 Whale Street. This is now officially not in the TIP District, as of your just, your vote just moments ago, which works perfectly for our next motion. Alderman, regarding item number two, Chair Donahue outlined to the committee the options and authorities before the committee, and subsequently the full board, to stabilize the property taxes for the development project at 24 Whale Street. Specifically, the apartments being created in the vacant commercial units number 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. The board has the authority granted by the voters to consider, under State Statute 32 VSA subsection 3847, neighborhood housing improvement programs. And the city statement of purpose used by the Rutland Redevelopment Authority encourages and incentivizes the rehabilitation of vacant or blighted property in the RRA tax stabilization policy. The project does meet the definition of vacant property. The housing criteria references, though, potential eligibility restrictions to residents with income below the median income of the state as it must be engaged with a nonprofit, which it is, but with said limits. In 2024, those limits were $78,024. Alternatively, Chair Donahue suggested the committee consider stabilization under the also-city voter-approved authority granted by State Statute 24 VSA subsection 2741 for tax stabilization under the economic development criteria because it was less restrictive than residential. The building permit for this development, which I have here with me today, was issued as a commercial project. The state, the statute affords a couple of options that could apply to this development accordingly. One is fixing and maintaining the valuation of such property in the grand list. And it gives two more options that don't apply here to this particular scenario. But the fourth, so one and four, add number, number four, fixing the taxable to such property at a percentage of annual tax. The committee then discussed the following details presented by Chair Donahue and asked questions of the City Assessor, and the property owner, developer Claire Purcell. I listed both just so you can see the tax stabilization proposal on the vacant, and it falls under, again, the qualifications of vacant. That's to be vacant for at least 90 days, which it has been as a commercial property. And the valuations as of April 1st, 2025, which would be the same as the valuations set by the assessor of April 1st, 2024. And that is Unit 7, 612, Unit 8, 611, Unit 9, 661, Unit 10, 619. And then Units 11 and 12, which are combined at 137,499, those are being divided up into two. So they would be 68,700 each. The total for that valuation, the tax we would be, valuation we would be setting in this case, $387,700. Note that the purchase, the six units were purchased for $285,000. So this is set at the rates that they were when they were left at commercial. For valuation of all units expected to remain unchanged, that would be now because it's effective 1/4/125. It is expected to be potentially changed upward 4/1/26 when they're reassessed. That would affect probably the Vermont State Educational Property Tax side of this. I'll get into that note in a moment. But my recommendation is the Board of Aldermen approve, sort of like option number one, fixing the valuation as a 4/1/25 assessment for a period of five years. The statute does allow us to go to as much as 10 years. The Rutland Redevelopment Authority's sort of policy, if you will, is five years, and I agree with that. And that is under that State Statute 24 VSA subsection 2741, Economic Development Statute Authority. And it's called fixing and maintaining the valuation of such property in the grand list. Suggestion number two that we reviewed was recommending the Board of Aldermen approve a five-year incremental increase of assessed valuation each April 1st as outlined below. Again, same statute. Number four, fixing the taxable, applicable, tax applicable to such property at a percentage of the annual tax. So if you were to do that scenario, it would be assessed at that current rate, that what I just described. Year two, 20% of whatever it is at 2026, and we don't know that. Same for 27 at 40%, don't know that. Same at six for year four at 60, year five at 80, and in theory, at year six, you'd be at 100%. You will be with the version number one as well. But again, we don't know what those numbers are because the assessor has the ability to reassess each year based on improvements to the property. And also, we don't know what the tax rate would be to apply to that. So I just wanted to make a few notes. The property owner had filed a grievance on the three, the 387.7. And so regarding the current valuation assessment, it was, again, purchased at 285. But, and she had indicated that she would probably be, and I don't know if we know if that has been, alright. So she indicated she might be rescinding that request to grieve the property tax, but that hasn't been done as of tonight. I have said that. We also, just for the record, anticipate a citywide reappraisal to be completed by April 2028. So watch for that, and that would also change this assessment, but not if we, not the way we set it tonight if we do option number one. But it adds another dynamic to the second option. And then, just to note, because whatever we approve tonight, the tax stabilization agreement can affect only the municipal tax assessment, not the state education taxation portion, so we want to be clear about that. After committee discussion and hearing supportive comments from the property owner, developer Claire Purcell, Alderwoman McClure moved to recommend to the full Board of Aldermen to fix and maintain the municipal valuation in the grand list of Units 7 through 12 at 24 Whale Street as of April 1st, 2025, at $387,700 for a period of five years under the authority granted by Chapter 75 Economic Development, cited as Vermont State Statute 24 VSA subsection 2741, letter A, number one. Vice Chair Davis seconded the motion. The motion passed on a vote of three yes and zero voting no. Voting in favor were Chair Donahue, Vice Chair Davis, and Alderwoman McClure. And I would move.
You so move, and it's been seconded. Alrighty, any debate, any questions for Alderman Donahue on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
And in closing, I just want to mention, because he made sure to make a point before adjourning, Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region Director, Lyle Jepson stated that it is important that messaging gets out that the city of Rutland is open for business in the projects, and this project is an example of that. Lyle thanked the committee for getting this across the finish line. Claire Purcell stated she also appreciated all the work of everyone in the room and commented that she was excited to partner with people bringing these new beautiful apartments into Rutland City. Vice Chair Davis moved to adjourn, seconded by Chair Donahue. Motion passed and the meeting concluded at 5:32, 32 minutes for that committee meeting. Respectfully submitted, Alderman Tom Donahue.
Very good, alright. Thank you very much, Alderman Donahue. Appreciate it. Thank you. Moving right along, Alderman Gillum, you're up, Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Public Works Committee met on April 10th. Members present, Gillum, Clifford, Talbot, and Heck. Others present was Davis and Wickham, city engineer, city commissioner, or Public Works Commissioner, and the water treatment plant manager. Also Gordon from the Rutland Herald. The meeting started at 5:30 in the conference room. The first issue is the water treatment and collection system for 20-year evaluation. The city engineer Ted Gillum briefed the committee. As part of the Rutland City Wastewater Treatment Facility discharge permit, the city is required to complete 20-year evaluation of the treatment plant and collection system. As a result, the Public Works connected to Aldridge and Elliot, consultant engineers through a qualified, qualification-based selection process, which is previously approved by the Board of Alder. The scope of work will be in six steps, and you can see that on what I did for the committee or for the board members. I attached all the attachments and memos from the department, so we don't have to read every one of these because basically all this is for information only. So the project is going to be six months, cost at $73,100. See, obviously, attachment A. The Public Works Committee, or the Public Works Department is asking for action upcoming meetings, not at this meeting, by the way. And the project will be completed in 2034. No actions committed, no action taken by the committee. This is information only. So be sure you hang on to these attachments because they're going to be coming at us here. It's not going to go, it's going to come directly from the department as the documentation is completed. So we don't have to go through this whole thing again. That way, the board. That way, the board's aware that this is happening. So the second item was the lead service line inventory. The city engineer briefed the committee. The water systems are required to identify material types of all water service lines, both on the system side and the private side. Categorize them in the following: non-led, lead, GGR, galvanized, required replacement. Unknown is the other item. We are going through this process right now. We've already finished the first phase, getting the inventory together. But apparently, we are having some issues here. And as you can see in the documents that I've given you, there's a couple proposals in there, and it could cost us up to $7 million to complete this project, or it could cost us $1.6 million. So those things are still working through. I just want to make a public plea. There's 300 properties that have not reported in yet to the Department of Public Works, basically on what their water system is. We're hopefully going to have a list someday so we can get it out there so people know that they haven't complied. So it's very important that these 300 come in and report their findings because it's going to save the city a lot of money. So if we have to go in there and do that ourselves, it could hit us to $7 million. So this is a very important thing for the folks who are on the list to get their process completed. The other item in committee, that's for information only, by the way. The other item in committee was the Terrell Street Water and Sewer Utility update. The engineer has told us that we've had some, lots of problems there. We've had various breaks, interruption of business, road closing all the time. So the committee didn't take any action, but they really would like the department to take this on and start completing that project because the problems are not going to go away. You've got pavement under there, concrete pavement underneath the road that keeps moving. It's also causing all these pipes to break. Plus, we have some old pipes in there. Water and sewer pipes are in there from way back, century ago, that needs to get replaced. So we really need to do the project all at once and to get the project completed. So the committee was very unfavorable of the department to move forward on this, and they're going to be back to us on their final proposal. And this is for information only. The meeting ended at 6:25. My suggestion, you hang on to these documents so when these things come in, you're well aware of what's happening. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Alderman Gillum on his report? Thank you very much. Seeing none, we're moving along to Finance Committee. Alderman.
In the absence of Alderman Whitcomb, I will read the Finance Committee report.
Well, thank you very much, Alderman Kupole.
There was two items on the agenda. The first item was JCI contract to include review of the modified scope. The second is a request for a balance of former ARPA funds for the Main Street Park, Center Street, and the parking kiosks. Committee members present were Alderman Whitcomb, Alderman Kupole, Alderwoman McClure, and Alderwoman Davis. Others present: Mayor Donjus, President Alair, Alderman Talbot, Alderman Clifford, Alderman Gillum, Alderwoman Tadio, Treasurer Markowski, Recreation Director Tyler Dolan, Zoning Administrator Ed Bove, Public Works Commissioner Bob Protovansky, Gordon Giacillo from Rutland Herald, Jeans Angelatis. Did I get that right, Dean?
Close call.
This hour, right?
Anthony Marciano of JCI. I got that right. Thank you. The Finance Committee meeting began at 5:31 PM. The committee began by discussing the JCI contract project update. Dean was invited to discuss the revised project scope of the work. Dean shared that the total expense of the project has been reduced from approximately $5 million to $3.6 million. Dean and Anthony explained that the project had been updated to remove solar panels from many municipal buildings, but included adding them to the roof of the Giorgietti Building. Alderwoman Davis inquired what percentage of the project was allocated to solar and what percentage was for weatherization. Anthony stated that approximately 15.8% of the project was attributed to weatherization, with the rest allocated to solar. Alderman Clifford inquired if there would be a cost associated with solar panels that failed. Dean responded that the solar panels come with a 25-year warranty. Alderman Clifford then asked who would be responsible for the cost of disposing the solar panels at the end of the lifespan. Dean explained that the solar panels have an approximately 30-year lifespan, and replacing them at the end of the period would be a capital cost. Mayor Donjus added that he believed it would cost approximately $45 per solar panel to recycle at the end of the life. Tyler Dolan noted as an example that the recent removal of solar panels at the College of St. Joseph cost between $30,000 and $40,000. Alderman Kupole asked about the potential condition of the roof when the solar panels were eventually removed, and Alderwoman McClure inquired about the type of roof on Giorgietti facility. Recreation Director Dolan emphasized that the analysis of the roof would be critical as it would be detrimental if the lifespan of the solar panels outlived the lifespan of the roof. Dean then covered the project cost in pro forma for the Giorgietti solar option. There's PowerPoint slides in your packets. Alderwoman Davis inquired about the total expense that has been incurred to date related to the project. Approximately $600,000 was provided as the total incurred cost to date. Dean reviewed with the committee the list of other projects included in JCI proposed project, and again, see the attached scope matrix. Alderman Kupole asked a series of questions regarding potential variations in project expenses. Anthony explained that the contract was designed to ensure the project would be delivered at a cost quoted to the city of Rutland should the city proceed with the contract as outlined. Dean did inform the committee that if JCI does not meet the energy savings guarantee in a given year, JCI will issue a check to the city of Rutland to cover the difference. President Alair requested that a representative from the school share their experience with a similar project and the savings they have realized. Treasurer Markowski asked several questions related to the utility savings and guaranteed savings, specifically inquiring approximately how long it would take before the city would begin to realize savings from a solar arrays. Anthony indicated that these savings would likely begin to be realized starting in 2026. Alderwoman Davis inquired when taxpayers would start to realize the savings, considering that the utility savings, the delta, parentheses, would initially be attributed to covering the cost of the debt associated with funding the project. Alderwoman McClure asked if the city would realize any additional savings by purchasing American-made solar panels. Anthony explained that 50% of the project needs to be considered a domestic project to qualify. It was also explained that the qualification was not outlined in the project. However, if the project did ultimately qualify, the city could realize the credit. Mayor Donjus indicated that the specific ask of the committee was to approve the amended contract and to authorize Treasurer Markowski to proceed with securing funding for the project. Alderwoman McClure made a motion to approve the amended JCI contract with an updated scope of the work and to present to the full Board of Aldermen. The motion passed 4-0. Alderman Davis made a motion to authorize the treasurer to continue the financing process of the JCI project with TD Bank contingent upon the full board being presented with the requested financial information outlining detailed costs to date. The motion passes 4-0. The board next took up the requested allocation.
So I'm going to stop you right there if I could. You've got a couple of motions that have come out here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we're going to take them up one by one.
Okay.
Okay, and then we can get back into the report. So the first motion that came out, Alderwoman McClure made a motion to approve the amended JCI contract with an updated scope of work and to present to the full Board of Aldermen. The motion passed 4 to nothing, and you so move.
I so move.
Second.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded on that specific motion. Debate on that. Alderwoman Tadio.
I just have a statement from Ted Plomenos to read on behalf of the Rutland City Public Schools, and he regrets that he could not be here tonight, but I do want to quickly read this because there are some questions that were asked during the Finance Committee meeting. It's only three paragraphs, so it will be quick. Rutland City Public Schools has worked with JCI on many significant projects, including energy efficiency projects and renewable energy projects for more than a decade, going back to approximately 2010. The district's previous chief financial officer, CFO, Peter Ammons, arranged for many of these projects during his tenure, including the installation of solar panels that were delivered on time and on budget. During my tenure as CFO since 2020, all these projects have operated in line with their specifications and financial deliverables. Given JCI's solid track record of demonstrated performance, as well as their cost competitiveness and effectiveness, the district re-engaged JCI in recent years, including Dean Angelitis and his colleagues. In the past few years, JCI served as the general contractor working with RCPS to design and complete a $4 million district-wide HVAC overhaul. Similarly, we'll need one at the police station that they will be doing, using one-time federal ESER fund grant, grant funds during a limited window of funding availability, along with assisting RCPS to manage other ESER-funded projects. These projects were especially challenging because many other school districts and municipalities were receiving one-time ESER grants at the same time, and so were also competing at the same time to line up qualified subcontractors and equipment providers. JCI's position as an engineering industry leader served the district especially well during that challenging time. Thanks to JCI and Dean Angelitis' team performing on time and on spec, the district was able to effectively and efficiently utilize almost every dollar of the $17 million in total ESER grant funding for which RCPS was eligible in a narrow two-to-three-year window. Based on the school district's extensive experience working with JCI over many years, I believe the city would also be well-served by working with JCI. Moreover, given JCI's longstanding position as an industry leader, the city would have assurance that JCI and its engineering and servicing capabilities would continue to be available to stand behind its work well into the future. Again, respectfully submitted Ted Plomenos, CFO, Rutland City Public Schools.
Okay. All righty. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. Alderman Heck.
Is there a dollar amount associated with the updated or the amended contract?
The total amount, are you looking for? 3.4 million. It started at 4.9 million. We were not granted the $500,000 MERP grant, and that is why we refinanced. The history of this project is that in the fall, the full board voted to approve it, so we have entered contract, entered into this contract. Hence, $600,000 has been expended up to date, and we have those detailed accounting. So now, at this time, they've reworked the project to make it still financially viable for the city, where every single year, for the span of 20 years, we will save $500, netting the city $10,000 over the span of 20 years. After those 20 years, every single year, just from the solar alone, the city will save $65,000 and $200,000 on its electricity costs. Again, that's in 20 years. I'm hoping to still be around and in the city actively participating at that time, and so that would be a great savings for us to be realizing at that time. So I hope that everyone will vote in favor of this contract tonight.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Alderman Heck? Okay. All righty. Any further, yes, Alderman Davis.
So I've had concerns from the beginning. I support the HVAC that's needed. I support the weatherization that's needed. I support the streetlight upgrades that are needed. My concern is solar, and in talking with Alderman Tadio, in order to have any kind of a payback, positive payback, solar is needed and necessary. I also spoke with the city treasurer. We're talking $10,000 at the end of 20 years, but it's going to cost us $8,700 just insurance for the panels that will be on these roofs. So then there was more discussion about, well, we have to do these upgrades anyways to our buildings, but no, we don't. We have to do weatherization upgrades. We certainly have to upgrade the HVAC at the police department. We certainly have to upgrade street lighting, but we don't have to go solar. That's a choice. I choose not to.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Alderman Talbot.
Can I just ask if Alderwoman Davis has a plan for what we'll do if we don't move forward with this revised scope of work since we already entered into a contract?
Well, if she chooses to answer that, that's for sure.
I don't think I said end the contract. It's been amended. I would like to see it amended more. Hence saying I support the HVAC, the lighting, the weatherization.
Okay. Alderwoman Tadio.
So I think there's like a misunderstanding of how the project works. Those projects are, cost money. And the solar, because we save money on our electricity bill, is where the savings is that can pay for that HVAC per this contract. So to rework the contract again without the solar, it won't come out cost beneficial to us. The solar is where the savings is. This is, yes, it's beneficial for the environment, but really, this comes down to dollars and cents, and it's about the cost-effectiveness, and solar is effective technology, and it will save us money, and that's where the savings come from to pay for this. So I think we can keep messing around with this, but I think, you know, this contract was entered into in the fall, and now it's the spring, and so we have spent many months now, and the further we delay, the more cost the city incurs. So I do not want to see this go back to committee. I would like to see this move forward tonight and so that we can get going on these upgrades and start saving the city money.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Alderman Donahue.
Surprise. Just that I think the key is in the, what they call the utility cost avoidance and operations and maintenance cost avoidance, which is guaranteed by JCI. So you'll see that in the chart, and that is fees that would be, we'd be probably paying to Green Mountain Power in effect. So that that is one of the reasons that there's that, they call it cost avoidance, but that's the offset, I think, to the cost of the energy that we would be paying one, we're going to pay one or the other. And so then it nets out the small profit at the end of that.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Certainly. Alderman.
About $6 million.
Just in case it seems like there might be some folks who are unsure about some of the details, should we invite Mr. Angelitis, the folks from JCI, to speak to and clarify any points that board members have brought up during this debate?
I'm certainly sure that if he would like to speak, he could raise his hand and step up to the microphone, only if he wants to.
If I may?
Yes.
I just have one other question, and I'm not sure, I guess I'll look at the city attorney. So in an email that I received from the treasurer, she said someone, I don't know who someone is, recommended that the city should request a surety bond, S-U-R-E-T-Y, bond from JCI to protect the city if there are issues with the roof at the Giorgietti complex. I don't know what that means. I'm just bringing it up, so it could be discussed.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I can answer that question.
Okay.
So effectively, as part of the solar, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
As part of the solar installation process, there's a requirement that we work with, with our subcontractors in order to ensure that the roof warranty and that the roof is not damaged appropriately during the installation of the solar. It's a standard process within the solar installation, and surety bond would be included in that, along with the liability associated with any potential damages that JCI would take ownership on as part of the installation of the solar.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you very much. All righty.
Give me a glass of water.
So it looks like Alderman Clifford might have something. Go ahead.
Question, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I noticed, I brought this up in the meeting as well, that materials were ordered. But the question I have now is if we didn't approve a contract yet, why were materials ordered?
You did approve a contract.
You did approve a contract.
Contract was signed September 30th.
So I might be able to help even on this one. I think we're approving an amended contract.
That's correct.
From the original one that was signed by this board back last summer, fall, whenever it was. So I think that's exactly what's being asked.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're covered as far as the roof at Giorgietti and whether or not it can sustain the weight.
Yes.
We are. It's solid.
Yes, we have structural analysis and drawings.
Okay. Yes, Alderman Heck.
Hypothetical question. This amended contract doesn't get approved tonight, does that mean the original contract still exists and we'll move forward? still exists and will move forward?
So I think that's a city attorney question. I'll turn to her.
Yeah, and I can answer that. So part of this is the amendment to the contract, the original contract and those provisions still exist, except for those that were explicitly discussed in the committee and that are being altered and changed, which is, for the most part, the scope of work, which entails the overall cost at the end.
So basically, just $500,000 less to whatever the grant was supposed to be, it is just going to basically remove that aspect.
Yeah, a little bit more complicated, because as you pull scope, you lose some savings, right? So there was a little bit more maneuvering that we had to do over the last few months in order to ensure that the city of Rutland still had a positive benefit by doing the project. Our intention would be to provide a modified scope of work, as you just mentioned, via contract amendment, to reflect the changes appropriately. We wanted to get through today and make sure that everything was, I guess, thumbs up before we go.
Anything else? Yeah, go ahead.
Nope, I'm good.
Alsat? Okay, yeah, Alderman Davis.
I think what I would like, if possible, is that we have frequent updates as to what's being done, what's being completed, because I think this board has not always been part of a lot of discussion, and we need to be, so we know what's happening, what building, what's been addressed, I guess.
And just to address that comment, and it's perfectly understandable, what we do as part of the construction, our construction manager, Victor Hall, will be holding meetings at any frequency that the Alderman require, if it's once a month or once every other week, much the same way as we did in development of the project. We held bi-monthly meetings, so we had a meeting every other week and invited every department head into, along with the mayor and his assistant, to opine on the development of the scope. We don't develop scopes for these projects independently of our customers. It's a collaboration that we've been engaged in with the city of Rutland now for almost an entire year.
And I don't disagree with that at all. The issue is that that information did not always come here.
Unfortunately, I.
You can't control that.
Yeah.
What I'm asking is that you do control that by making sure that this board has a report. I don't know if it's quarterly. I don't know what the appropriate time is, but that you don't need to be here, that it's in writing, however that works, but just that we have an update.
How about if we provide you a monthly report?
That's great.
As we go, I can, we can definitely commit to that. Like I said, as we go through the project, our construction manager will be meeting with department heads as we go to do a constant update on the project, where we are, you know, needs to get into buildings, those types of things. I'm sure when we get to the police station, he's going to be coordinating with the police chief quite a bit to make sure that we have access, when we need access, that we're doing it in a safe and, you know, safe and in a manner that's prescribed by the police department to make sure that we're covering all our bases there. And as far as the rest of the buildings in the city go, much the same thing. I know that Vic will be working a lot with Tyler Dolan and a lot of other department heads, Bob and everyone else, to make sure that not only do we execute this project on time and to budget, but do it in a way that will show the city the same level of excellence that we've been showing Rutland City Public Schools for the last 15 years.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the motion is to approve the amended JCI contract. The motion passed out of committee for nothing. Motion is to approve. Roll call has been requested. So seeing no further debate.
It requires a second, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
It requires a second.
It requires a second. It's been seconded. So the clerks shall call the roll.
Alderman Heck?
No.
Alderman Kupali?
No.
Alderman Clifford?
No.
Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Alderman Tadio?
Yes.
Alderman Donahue?
Yes.
Alderman Gillum?
Yes.
Alderman McClure?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Six to three?
Yes.
Six yes, three no. Motion passes. Okay, so Alderman Kupali, the second motion, which wouldn't have been appropriate if the first one hadn't passed, is, you can go right ahead. Alderman Davis made a motion, blah, blah, blah.
To authorize the treasurer to continue financing the process of the JCI project with TD Bank contingent upon full board being presented with the requested financial information outlining detailed costs to date. That motion passed 4-0, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any debate on that? Seeing none. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
The board next took up registered allocation of the funds formerly known as ARPA. Treasurer Markowski provided the committee with an outline of the projects funded with excess balance, or fund balances, from the fund formerly known as ARPA. Alderman Davis made a motion to request $10,000 be relinquished from the tech group IT request to address critical needs and reallocate it to the Center Street scoping study. The motion passed 4-0, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded on that one. Debate, Alderman McClure.
Not so much a debate, but just information to share with people at home. This does not put the city in a situation in which we are not paying our current IT services. This just removes financial obligation from our previous IT services. When I read that line, I got really nervous, thinking that we might not have tech support or have less tech support, so I just wanted to make sure that point was clear to folks at home.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else? Motion's been made and seconded, and seeing no further debate. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Alderman Davis made a motion to reallocate $40,000 in funds and to attribute to the main, to be attributed to the Main Street Park from the funds previously allocated to the Alderman Chamber Upgrades Project. The motion passed 4-0, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any debate on that? Seeing none. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. And finally?
Alderman Davis made a motion to reallocate $2,752.08 from the funds previously allocated to the Alderman Chamber Upgrades Project and apply it to the overspend of the parking kiosk replacement project. The motion passed 4-0, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, again, the motion's been made and seconded. Anyone have any debate on that? Seeing none. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Meeting adjourned at five, or at 6:47 PM.
Okay. Thank you very much, Alderman Kupali. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving along, Alderman Davis.
So I'm going to be as quick as we can, because we're about quarter to 10. So a public safety met April 15th. Members present were Alderman McClure, Alderman Gillum, Donahue, and Chairman Davis. Also present were President Alair, Alderman Kupali, Commissioner Nurtroda Bianski, Ed Bowe Planning, City Attorney Lechance, and Maggie O'Brien from Regional Planning. The discussion was the local hazard mitigation plan. The meeting took place at 5:30. Chief Lovett, who was unable to attend, had endorsed this plan, as he serves also as our emergency manager director, and feels that this plan meets the city's needs. Maggie gave a brief synopsis of the plan, which was last done in 2014, but is required to be done every five years. It needs to be in place to obtain any FEMA funding. Public comment periods are still continuing for this plan. Some changes have been made based on comment, and all comments are captured. At this time, I'd like to turn it over for Maggie to give a brief synopsis of the local hazard mitigation.
And thank you for your patience, Maggie.
As I was sitting in the audience, I was thinking, I'm so glad I'm not my coworkers who live in Virgens or Leister or even Saratoga Springs tonight. So, given that the plan was already included in the packet for the March 17th meeting, I will forego giving a synopsis and instead give a brief overview of the comments I have received and how that has changed the plan draft compared to the March 17th version. So it's mostly editorial in nature. First, the Otter Creek Clean Water Service Provider, if you're familiar with that, the director suggested including the Quisp as a potential funding source for the natural systems application project types, so establishing a vegetated buffer and restoring floodplain. And this addition was made to Table 6 on page 37. The Green Mountain Power Chief Dam Safety Engineer corrected information in relation to Patch Pond Dam. So that information had been pulled from the Vermont Dam inventory, and it turns out that there was more pertinent, or more current information. The condition was, instead of being unknown, it was to be upgraded to fair. The hazard potential classification from significant hazard to low, and the latest inspection year from 2011 to 2024. So these changes were made on page 14 to the narrative and to the flood risk map on page 16. Also from Green Mountain Power, the lead of the grid resiliency provided updated data, including the year 2024, for the average annual outage statistics. This is in relation to Table 1 on page 4, so that data was updated. And we had a member of the public ask about plans for the Chittenden Reservoir in case of a breach, which I'm sure Chief Lovett has talked to the, to the board about before. And so the city does have an active emergency action plan, including evacuation procedures and for specifics and information relating to emergency shelters, which is also part of the inquiry. The planning team is recommending that we contact, that you would contact the Emergency Management Director, Bill Lovett, for that information. The Public Safety Committee clarified the combination, the status of combination pond. I had been under the impression that it was a full-out dam removal, but it is actually modification and dredging. That is very different from outright dam removal, so that is the most substantial change for this draft that is going to VEM. We will be excluding that as an item from the action plan. It will be removed from Table 6, and in Table 5, we will instead categorize that item as not recommended for implementation with the reasoning of the, with the different plans. Yeah. And then, last but not least, given that there's a pending the EPC decision on April 24th, which had been mentioned earlier, depending on the outcome of that, it might modify some language about the TIP district on pages 8 and 25 in particular. So I will be in touch with the city after that decision is made to finalize that language and wrap everything up and make sure that, that everything's good to go. And my target date for submission right now is April 25th. So that and a couple of other placeholders with images in relation to the public comment period, in relation to final dates for decisions being made by the board, that covers everything left still pending in the plan, so.
Okay.
So my motion, Mr. Chairman, is to approve the submitted plan to the Vermont Emergency Management. The motion was unanimous, and I so move.
Second.
Okay. Motion is to approve the submitted plan to Vermont Emergency Management. Any questions, debate? Yes, Alderman Gillum.
Just to come, you've done a lot of work on this, and thank you very much. I know it was rough there for a few meetings, but we got through it, and thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you. Seeing no further debate. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Maggie.
All right. Thank you very much, Maggie. Appreciate your patience, once again. Okay, select committees, Alderman McClure.
Thank you. Everybody should have a paper copy on your desk. My apologies for not getting them emailed over. These are the minutes for the Human Resources Committee on April 2nd, 2025. Present was myself, serving as chair, Alderman Whitcomb, and Alderman Clifford. Also present were Alderman Kupali, Mayor Dungus, Attorney Lechance, Ellen Coyle, members of the Department of Public Works, and members of Rutland Recreation. I did not take very good notes the night of, so please, nobody be upset that I did not name you specifically. I just wrote down DPW and Recreation and was too embarrassed to call all of you. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The following items were discussed for informational purpose only and remain in committee. Job application updates. Human Resources is reviewing the language in city job postings to ensure it encourages diverse applicants. HR also plans to assess the platforms used in candidate outreach, evaluate the city's hiring process, and review implicit bias training policies to ensure consistency and effectiveness. The non-union employee handbook, as of December 12th, 2024, this item remains in committee for further discussion. The first draft of this handbook was not ready for presentation at the time of our last discussion and is still being workshopped internally within Human Resources before being presented to the board. Finally, code of conduct and the code of ethics. Former committee member and former chair Alderman Tadio has been working with the city attorney in Human Resources to draft, or had been in her time as chair, to draft updated versions of the code of conduct and code of ethics. These drafts were flexible and left room for the changes due to the updated state ethics guidelines. Now that we have those guidelines, we'll be, these will be reviewed by the Human Resources Director, and the drafts will be revisited by the, by the committee at a later date. And it was a quick one. The meeting adjourned at 5:48 PM.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Alderman McClure on her report? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, going down, reports of representatives, petitions, Board of Control Commissioners, Cannabis Commissioners, unfinished business, doesn't look like there's anything on any of those. Alderman Donahue.
Yes, the traffic committee, Mr. Chairman, met on Friday, so it wasn't on the agenda because the agenda was due on Thursday. But I did want to just give a report, so there'll be no vote, no need to vote, but we met over at the police department, and the relatively new associate engineer, his name is Supi Deathlefson, and very, very knowledgeable man, very impressed with him. And he gave some updates on, one was Woodstock Avenue, and the reason I wanted to mention this tonight, because it is of interest, might be of interest to the public, regarding the potential left-hand turn at Deer Street, which we read across from Bo'shampton Road Pharmacy and that traffic light, and that they're taking a look at that, he's taking a look at that because there has been some queuing, because the left-hand turn into Lafayette Street then creates no opportunity for a left-hand turn into Deer Street without having to stop to wait for that westerly traffic, and therefore, everybody is queuing up going west, or back west from Bo'shampton Road back. And also, when you get to that point, you're in this little limbo between traffic lights. So you actually can't see the light head, you don't know what the, whether it's green or red on the other side when you're trying to finally make that left. Given that that's in interest to Goddick Center, I thought that was significant and important. So I'm very happy that they're going to take a good look at that, as well as, apparently, the volume on the button at the light is low, which of course can really be a big issue if you're particularly visually impaired, because as many people don't know, there's certain whistles that go off different than the other whistle, so you know whether you're getting the whistle to cross east or west or north to south if you're visually impaired. So it's very, very important, and it's now some, sort of an unsafe interaction, as it was termed. So those are very good things that the traffic committees, traffic safety committees looking at. There's no action tonight, but I will fill you in further, and there'll be some minutes that were taken, not by me, for that meeting. And then the only other topic was just crosswalk paintings, and the time of year, and those happens, and the expense of them. But one that particularly came up was the crosswalk painting for West Street at the Meadow Street walking path. And so it's painted on the State Street side and so forth, but it's not painted on the West Street side, so that, but the lights are up and they're solar operated, and it does have the signal set as well. It's excellent. I use it a lot. But, but the actual lines aren't painted, so that's one of those things that they're going to take a look at, too. And that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thanks very much.
Thanks for appointing me to that committee.
You're welcome. All righty. Yes, I haven't quite got to miscellaneous motions, but.
I was going to make a motion to untable the mayor's nominations.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made to untable the nominations, and it's been seconded. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. And Alderman Talbot?
I'll make a motion to, for a voice vote on Mark Sadekursky for building inspector.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so there's been a motion made, and it's been seconded to have a voice vote on the nomination of Mark Sadekursky. Any debate?
How, how long has Mark, how long has Mark been the building inspector now?
I hired, city hired him about four years, the city hired him about four years ago. Four years.
Okay. Okay.
All righty, so...
Mr. President?
Yes, Alderman Heck.
Just one other. The DPW, not the DPW, but the Building and Zoning Department has grown a little bit over there. So is there still a zoning administrator, or has that position been moved? Not planning, but zoning?
Planning and zoning.
And the planner and zoning administrator, and there's an assistant zoning administrator.
And then, the Building Inspector, Mike Brookman is the Health Inspector.
Okay.
The departments have split.
So, so I know we're, we're gonna vote on the nomination of Mark Sadekurski. We're getting a little sidetracked, but is there anything you want to clarify there, Mayor?
Yeah, just, just real quick. So, prior to Mark, prior to Ed Boe being the zoning administrator, it was Andrew Strinasty. Other than that, the list hasn't changed since the last time. The zoning administrator title is in charter, and that is why Ed is the person that's nominated for that position, because we have to fulfill what the charter requests, which is zoning administrator, even though there's an assistant administrator. Is that good?
Okay, all righty. So, your motion exactly, again, Alderman Talbot, would be to have a voice vote, but did you make a motion to approve, or?
Well, norm, yes.
Normally, we pass the ballot box, so I just want...
Motion for a voice vote for the approval of Mark Sadekurski for Building Inspector.
So, a yes would be to approve, and a no would be not to?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just so we're all clear on that. Any debate on that motion? This is Mark Sadekurski. All righty, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
I'll make a motion for a voice vote for the approval of Tracy Capusta for City Clerk.
Second.
Point of order, Mr. President? Okay, board rules indicate that at 10 o'clock, we need to have a motion to continue the board meeting. It's 10 a, 10 PM exactly.
Motion to continue our board meeting for a remainder of 30 minutes?
You could hold on for one second. I just want to clarify that. I want to make sure that it's 10 o'clock. Last I knew, it was 10:30, but...
I was gonna say, last time I checked the rules, it was 10:30, but I'm looking for...
You might be right, Alderman Heck. I'm just not sure.
By the time we find the rules, it'll be 10:30.
It might be. We're gonna hold off on one second.
I'll make the motion if, if we need to.
Yes?
Apparently, it's, my copy of the rules has wandered off of my desk, but if anyone has a copy...
Have it.
You need board rules?
If someone's already got them pulled up before I can get them off my phone.
I got a paper copy of the board rules, but I don't know where it is in here. We're gonna stand down for one second while we figure this out.
It's 10:30. Rule one. Any meeting continuing beyond 10:30?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, getting back to where we were. So, there was a motion made, and somebody could refresh my memory, please?
A motion for a voice vote to approve Tracy Capusta's appointment as City Clerk.
Second.
All righty, so there's a motion made and seconded.
And motion for a roll call vote?
Motion for a roll call vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a second. Okay. Any debate on that?
Do we need a motion for a roll call?
We do.
You do need a motion for a roll call.
So, anyway, so we have a request to have the vote, and it has been requested by roll. I guess this would be a question for the city attorney, seeing how the person that is, we're voting on is the city clerk. Should, we should have the city attorney tabulate the findings, along with myself?
I can call the roll if that's what you're...
Yeah, I think that that would be appropriate, if you could call the roll.
Absolutely. Alderman Heck?
No.
All right, Alderman Coopley?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford? Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tadio? Alderman Donahue?
Yes.
Alderman Gillum?
No.
Alderwoman McClure?
Yes.
And Alderwoman Davis?
No.
And you have to do it, which president?
President Alair votes.
President in favor.
Sorry, apologies. President Alair.
No.
All right. That leaves us with five yeses, and according to the charter, that means that Tracy Capusta is reappointed.
And five no's. So, Tracy is reappointed. Thank you. Next up is Planning and Zoning.
Yeah, I would make a motion for a voice vote for Ed Boe for Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Second.
All righty, motions been made and seconded. Any debates? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion for a roll call vote?
I'm sorry, a roll call has been requested. So, on Planning and Zoning, Ed Boe, a roll call has been requested. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I didn't hear a second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Is there a second to that motion?
I believe it's been seconded. I thought I heard a second. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear a second. It must be, I must be hearing things.
Paul seconded.
Paul seconded. Okay, thank you very much.
Alderman Heck?
Me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alderman Coopley?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Yes.
Alderman Talbot?
Yep.
Alderwoman Tadio?
Yes.
Alderman Donahue?
Yes.
Alderman Gillum?
For you? Okay, yes.
Alderwoman McClure? Alderwoman McClure?
Yes.
Alderwoman Davis?
Yes.
And yes. Okay, you need a, 10?
And the last one, a motion for a voice vote for the reappointment of Bob Protavansky as Public Works Commissioner.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All righty, motion's been made and seconded.
I didn't, I didn't hear the person's name?
Protavansky.
Bob Protavansky. Okay. So, if you're ready for the vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn?
The motion's been made to adjourn.
Hold on.
The motion's been made to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
You wanna hold off?
I'll hold off.
New business?
If you would like to have some new business, go right ahead.
Part of the agenda.
I'd like to refer the issue, the city background check policy to the HR committee for discussion.
Second.
Okay, motion to make to refer the background check policy to the HR committee, and it's been seconded. Any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Now a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? We're adjourned.